I'm Amanda Fancy, I'm the dealer-owner of Gauze Home Hardware and Furniture. We've been at this location for about a year. We started in 1848, way back when. This is our fifth location, so we've never have left the town limits. So we're looking to build this location. We had lots of opportunities to potentially look at outside of the town limits, but it was really key for us to be and continue to be a growing business in Bridgewater. Bridgewater, Nova Scotia is unique. We have a beautiful countryside. Our town is 7,500 people, but then our customer reach is about 45,000. So we're talking about lots of small communities, hidden treasures. There's huge opportunity here, and I think that it's certainly worthwhile to make the visit, make the call, do some inquiry, because it certainly is somewhere where I think there would be some strong investment opportunities, for sure.
My name is Joey Richard. I come from Quebec, Montreal. I've studied opera, the Montreal Orchestra of Music, so this is where I've learned about Italian, the language, and the food. And my passion just became bigger and bigger for food. I've been cooking for 20 years, almost. I opened a family business, but the only thing I forgot is that my family is still in Montreal. So I make new friends, I'm building this thing, but it is a family business here. My chef is like my brother, his wife is like my sister. So I mean, I recreated a family environment. We do the real recipes, starting from the real ingredients. And for Italian food, what the secret is, few ingredients and very fresh. So each recipe would be like three, four ingredients maximum, but I mean, it's just the best ingredients and makes it so delicious. If you think that it's impossible to have your own business, I'm the living proof that it is possible. People want us to thrive. We work together. So everybody helps each other. If you want to be part of a community, it is the community to be part of.
My name is Joel Holland. I'm the owner and operator of Nine to Two Athletics. I found the opportunity, started this gym in my parents' garage, and now we are currently in an 8,600 square foot facility. A lot of people come here because of the community. The things that we offer here are different than a normal gym. It's an open atmosphere where you come in, the music's played over the loudspeakers, not in your ears. You don't put earbuds in and just walk around from one machine to the other. You focus on yourself, but at the same time, you get to meet new people. We have three floors, which we do CrossFit, boot camps, athletic training, and personal training. We have so many other businesses that are growing our economy and feeding into it becoming more populated, a place where people actually stay as opposed to leave. We're growing. We're getting bigger, and a lot of people are on the same push to become a better Bridgewater. I love this place. It's my home, and there is no other place that I want, would want my business to be.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting in Bridgewater Town Council. I will call the meeting to order. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing the motion to approve the agenda circulated, councillor Colquhoun seconded by deputy mayor Fugier. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Just to remind you, the town of Bridgewater is located in Mi'kmaq, the unceded ancestral territory of the Mi'kmaq people, and it's our privilege to be here. And I will apologize in advance. I will be coughing all through the meeting. I just cannot shake this cough. So my apologies, because I can't unmute the microphone all the time, so bear with me. And we're going to jump right to announcements, and I think someone is prepared to talk to us about the lobster crawl. So we'll turn it over to our very own Donna.
Thank you, Mayor Mitchell. Just a moment.
I feel like it's Christmas. I hope there's lobster.
Yes, indeed. So thank you so much, Mayor Council. It's a real pleasure to be here as your economic development officer for the town of Bridgewater.
Go to the microphone.
You are, I'm saying, go to the microphone. Let me get my claws over there.
Crawl over there.
I'm crawling over there now. So it's a real pleasure to be here to see you today because we're on Lobuary Eve. That would be February Eve, when the Nova Scotia Lobster Crawl kicks in. So as your economic development officer, it's been a real privilege to work with a number of our businesses here in Bridgewater, to invite them to crawl aboard for the celebration. And so I wanted to come before you today so that we could provide you with a bit of an update about what's been happening. So if you don't mind, I'm going to crack my claws off here and set them aside, so that I can refer to some of my notes there for you. So as you may be aware, the Nova Scotia Lobster Crawl began six years ago, so this is our sixth anniversary, but it started with the Nova Scotia, with South Shore Tourism Cooperative. As you know, we're partners with the South Shore Tourism Cooperative, with businesses up and down along the South Shore, and six years ago, they created an event called the Nova Scotia Lobster Crawl. As a result, it takes place during the month of February, and its entire focus was built, and its foundation was built on growing awareness and pride in our communities about our lobster fishing heritage and culture, but also about the fact that we live along the banana belt. All you need to do is head south to Nova Scotia's South Shore. You don't need to hop on a plane and get out of town. There's so much to see and do in our own communities. You just need to embrace the winter and have some fun with it. And why not whet your appetite with a little bit of lobster? Because most of the marketplace that visits the South Shore, and even many Nova Scotians don't realize that the lobster season is year-round. And some of us believe that the winter lobster was better than the summer lobster fishery. We won't get into that big debate tonight, but mine would win. But in any case. But as a part of all of that, in building that sense of pride, connection locally, it was also about inviting folks to come into the region, the fact that we're actually open. Most, until six years ago, the whole dialogue around tourism and business outlook or in looking into our community suggested that nothing's open, so why would I go there in the winter months? The Lobster Crawl was created to begin a new type of chatter, to motivate people to become aware of, hopefully generate demand, and at the end of the day, generate results for the businesses while we continue to build things up. It was also about local crafters and makers, like my lovely leather lobster purse, made by an artist in Blockhouse, or my lovely Lobster Crawl mitts that have been handmade by another artist locally from upcycled wool mittens. We have brooches, we have tuques that were made. Nothing has been made in China. The goal is, how can we support local makers and crafters so that you can dress for the weather and get out and enjoy dining out, hiking, cycling, and being out with other folks during the month of February? And of course, the color of lobster is cooked red. The color of love in the month of February is red, so it all kind of sticks us together quite nicely. So what's happening here in our community? Up until this year, we've been kind of low-key when it came to this festival. We're crawling aboard with an incredible collection of events, and that's what I wanted to touch base on with you today, so that you could be aware. And certainly everyone that's watching from at home or learning about it, through lobstercrawl.ca, everything will start to unfold. But there's a few key events that I wanted to bring to your attention. So first of all, if you don't know about Lucy the Lobster, she crawls out of the ocean in Barrington, the lobster capital of Canada, on Groundhog Day. At 8:00 a.m., she will rise from the Atlantic Ocean, be perched upon her trout, and look for her shadow. She's actually garnering international media attention, because she's the only lobster looking for her shadow. So if you Google Lucy the Lobster, or Lucy on Groundhog Day, the feeds will fill, but it's been covered by media all over the place. Weather Network comes in, Brett Russellson from CBC came down last year and covered it, snuggled right up to her. So the broadcast reaches. And it's, yes, it might sound corny, or shelly, but it's all about trying to capture the imaginations and demonstrate to people that there's something going on. So it was the platform to begin that process. So Lucy crawls out on February the 2nd. On February the 4th, that's when things really start to get heated up around here. So in the morning, on February the 4th, we will be hosting international travel media at the Des Grisay Museum. Our objective, they have to crawl their way over to the roll-off in the afternoon, but that morning, we'll be hosting them at the Des Grisay for a unique experience. They'll make some lobster cookies, they'll be doing a lobster 3D puzzle, they'll be meeting up with the team at the Des Grisay to explore the history and heritage of our community, and of course, they have a lobster art show happening that's inside the gift shop. So they'll be able to shop and experiment with some of those things. The media that are coming in, we've got Sherry Ott from the U.S., she goes by OtsWorld. We have Jay Ken from Ontario, he's Modern Traveler and Roadtrip.ca. We've got Pamela McNauton from Quebec, she's the urban guide in Quebec, and Alain Barce, whom some of you will know, the Kilt Cheffe, who is certainly frequent on CTV, et cetera. So they'll all be here. At the roll-off in the afternoon, we'll head over to the Michelin Social Club, where 12 restaurants will be competing for the title of the best lobster roll for 2024. Last year, Ospreys Nest won. Over the course of the month of February, them being open Thursday to Sunday, they sold in excess of 400 lobster rolls. And not everybody eats lobster rolls, and they're only open Thursday to Sunday. So you can see how the demand starts to roll on, and people travel everywhere for those lobster rolls. And again, the lobster roll is, you can take a steamed lobster and eat it one way. You steam it, you crack it open, maybe your dipping sauce might change, but otherwise, it's a steamed lobster. The lobster rolls present each of the restaurants an opportunity to uniquely present theirs, depending on what type of bread base they want to use, and then the condiments that they throw in. So everyone will be a little bit different. Osprey Nest won last year. Best Western at 27 South, just nearby here, won in a previous year as well. Captain Cats, Lobster Shack in Barrington took home the title a couple of times. So it's all claws down on this one, as they try to figure out who will be the winner. And certainly, Pam Mitchell will be there with us, along with the host of other folks. There'll also be a lobster market. So you too can pick up some lobster gear that's been handmade locally. And we're just getting started. That's the first weekend. That starts this weekend. After that, on February the 9th, there's a lobster paint night that's happening at King Street Beer with another local artist. On February 10th and 17th, of course, we have our Bridgewater 125 celebrations with Frost Festival that takes place at Lunnerberg County Lifestyle Centre. That fits into the scope and the calendar of events for the Lobster Crawl, because it's about celebrating community and demonstrating that there are things to see and do during the winter months. So this festival slides directly into that. So it gives us a couple of anchors. The next two days of events, which happen on the 10th and the 17th of February, is actually one I'm pretty excited about. You will be able to crawl King Street for a foodie tour. Now, we know that many folks don't see Bridgewater as having unique culinary attributes that they think of us for fast food, which we have all of them, and it's terrific to have them as anchors. But we have a culinary diversity that's starting to percolate, and we're getting creative with it. So Nova Scotia Explorer, who is Kalin O'Neill, will be hosting two foodie tours, one on the 10th and one on the 17th, and you'll spend the afternoon crawling up King Street, starting at Fancy Pants, and I think we're ending at King Street Beer. And there are many stops along the way, including the Arc, and their team are busy felting and creating lobster works of art. We'll be at the River Pub, we'll be crawling into Wiggles, so you get the drift. We're crawling along. So tickets are available for that online, too. So again, imagine a lobster foodie crawl in Bridgewater, dipping in and out of small businesses that are really enhancing our culinary experiences and celebrating the artisan's work. So you'll be able to sip, sample, savor, and shop your way along King Street. On the 17th, we've got the Lobster Chowder Luncheon that's happening with the Friends of Des Grisay. So again, they said, well, how can we do, what can we do? How can we get involved? They have a kitchenette. They've stepped forward, and now they're going to have a lobster chowder luncheon on that afternoon. And then they'll be able to showcase their artisan works. So throughout the month, those were some of the highlights of the dates, but throughout the month, we've got Crustacean Elation. Anybody know what that is? Councillor Tanner? In any case, Crustacean Elation is a lobster beer made with lobster shells, and it's delicious. If you haven't tried it, you should. It gets picked up in the media like crazy, because it's shock value, and we serve it with pride. It's made by Saltbox, but available at all the locations that are affiliated with the company. We've got Wiggles, who are doing lobster cookie decorating kits and related. They did them for Christmas, they're doing with other Christmas-related stuff. This time around, it's with lobster. The River Pub has their signature lobster roll on. The Arc will have their lobster creations all month. And at the Des Grisay, of course, because it's open, they'll have the art showcased throughout. We're also hearing from other folks, like treasured friends, who are just slowly crawling aboard now, but there'll be a whole section of lobster-related and themed creations by local artisans. So as you can tell, there's a little bit going on for Nova Scotia Lobster Crawl, but I'm incredibly proud of the volume of businesses and the engagement that has come forward from Bridgewater. We are inserting ourselves into an award-winning festival that happens in the winter months, and it's making waves. So I invite you to visit lobstercrawl.ca and crawl aboard to really enjoy the month of lobuary. Any questions?
Yeah, that's awesome. Any questions from anyone? I'm hungry.
I'm hungry, yeah.
I mean, we should have had probably some samples, just.
Oh, sure. My apologies. Next time.
But we can sample, of course. There are some, like you said, there's so many events and opportunities for us to do that, and for the public to do that. So as you said, the next big date is next Sunday, this coming Sunday.
Yeah, it is.
At the Michelin Social Club, right? So open to the public. Tickets?
Yeah, tickets are available.
Yep.
You will get a lobster roll, you'll be able to witness the 12 different lobster rolls being presented. The travel media will be there, there's a lobster market, so there are over 30 vendors that are popping in as a part of that process. So big event on February the 4th, right here in Bridgewater, kicking off really what will be the Nova Scotia Lobster Crawl.
Perfect. Then lots of stuff on the 10th and the 17th, as Donna said, and a Frost Fair at the Elsie Elsie from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Yeah.
So lots going on there. There's live music and games, activities, and indoor market in the Galleria.
Exactly.
And yeah, it's exciting.
There's no reason to go anywhere else, but stay on the South Shore and crawl your way into Bridgewater during the Lobster Crawl.
That's great.
Great. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Donna. Any other announcements from councillors? I was wondering if Pat's coming up to talk about 2025, but I think Donna covered most of that. I heard that play at the Des Grisay was sold out.
Yes, it was.
And so that's amazing. So congratulations to all those who put that on, and great story. So if there's nothing else, I see Hugh was already at the podium, so welcome Hugh McKay. Good to see you again. It's been a while.
It has been.
He's going to speak to us on the Rural Communities Foundation of Nova Scotia.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Mitchell. It's good to see you again, councillors, staff. Yes, Hugh McKay from the Rural Communities Foundation of Nova Scotia. Some of you may be familiar with the foundation, but I'll give you a bit of an overview on that. And thank you for giving us this opportunity to address you this evening. So I'll broadly review who we are, what we do, including examples of some of the projects that we're involved in across the province. And I'll focus a little bit more detailed on one of our specific projects called the Dave Gunning Zero Hunger Fund. I should explain this evening, I'm here really to create awareness, both of the foundation and of the Zero Hunger Fund, and give you a bit of a background on that for your discussions. And we'll hopefully have some time to do a few questions and answers at the end. So as I said, some of you may be familiar with the Rural Communities Foundation. We're one of approximately 200 foundations across, community foundations across the country. And here in Nova Scotia, we complement the work that's done by the Communities Foundation of Nova Scotia, which tends to focus on the larger urban communities, HRM, CBRM, while our focus is specifically on the rural areas of the province. We have a proven track record of developing and delivering grant programs to support a variety of local issues. We've been doing this for over 20 years. We are registered with CRA, with the Canada Revenue Agency, so we are accountable, we're transparent in our financial activities for fundraising and to the granting to our donors, our grantees, and to the community at large. We do not work in isolation. We're an active member of the Communities Foundation of Canada and for the Nova Scotia Not-for-Profit Coalition, as well as other organizations. We look at rural issues that are brought to us by community organizations, by municipal governments, such as yourself, by our own board members, and by individuals. And our interest in these issues is driven by our mission to support sustainable rural communities and environments. We convene meetings of interested parties to discuss the issues. We raise funds, we provide grants to community organizations to support local issues. Here are a couple of our current and planned programs. We administer the Ukrainian Resettlement Fund on behalf of the Canada-Ukraine Foundation, and we distribute funds from the foundation to qualifying refugee families as they begin to rebuild their lives here in Canada, and specifically in our case, in Nova Scotia. Nova Scotians are obviously impacted by climate change, particularly with increasing storms, with sea level rise, with invasive species and more. The Joan Feyman Climate Change Fund was established with us by the family of Joan Feyman, who is a noted American astrophysicist and climate change activist, and has family connections back to Nova Scotia. And the fund provides matching funds for matching financial resources to ignite creativity, innovation, change through community projects addressing climate change. The Housing for Health Program is designed to make housing available to medical practitioners looking to move into a rural community. It's not just for doctors, it's for nurses, for lab techs, and other medical professionals. And in this case, we have individuals who have donated properties to us in the past. We sell those, but we either make the property available to an incoming medical professional, or we sell it and put it in our reserve until there's a need for the funding. And of course, we do this and provide them, as we are a charitable organization, we provide a tax refund, which can be used on their CRA for their tax assessments. We, as I said, we do not keep a stock of housing. If there's an immediate need for housing, we'll go ahead with that. If not, we sell the property and hold the funds. The Soaring Eagle Funds Grant is a collaborative effort with a young So I invite you to visit lobstercrawl.ca and crawl aboard to really enjoy the month of lobster-y. Any questions?
Yeah, that's awesome. Any questions from anyone? I'm hungry.
I'm hungry, yeah.
I mean, we should have had probably some samples, just.
Oh, sure, my apologies, next time.
But we can sample, of course. There are so, like you said, there's so many events and opportunities for us to do that and for the public to do that. So as you said, the next big date is next Sunday, this coming Sunday.
Yeah, it is.
At the Mission Social Club, right? So open to the public, tickets.
Yeah, tickets are available.
Yep.
You will get a lobster roll, you'll be able to witness the 12 different lobster rolls being presented. The travel media will be there, there's a lobster market, so there are over 30 vendors that are popping in as a part of that process. So big event on February the 4th, right here in Bridgewater, kicking off really what will be the Nova Scotia Lobster Crawl.
Perfect. Then lots of stuff on the 10th and the 17th, as Donna said, and Frost Fair at the LCLC from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Yeah.
So lots going on there, there's live music and games, activities, and indoor market and the Galleria.
Exactly.
And yeah, it's exciting.
There's no reason to go anywhere else but stay on the South Shore and crawl your way into Bridgewater during the Lobster Crawl.
That's great.
Great. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Donna. Any other announcements from councillors? I was wondering if Pat's coming up to talk about 2025, but I think Donna covered most of that. I heard that play at the Desprezé was sold out.
Yes, it was.
And so that's amazing. So congratulations to all those who put that on and great story. So if there's nothing else, I see Hugh was already at the podium, so welcome Hugh McKay, good to see you again, it's been a while.
It has been.
And he's going to speak to us on the Rural Communities Foundation of Nova Scotia.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor Mitchell, good to see you again, councillors, staff. Yes, Hugh McKay from the Rural Communities Foundation of Nova Scotia. Some of you may be familiar with the foundation, but I'll give you a bit of an overview on that. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to address you this evening. So I'll broadly review who we are, what we do, including examples of some of the projects that we're involved in across the province. And I'll focus a little bit more detailed on one of our specific projects called the Dave Gunning Zero Hunger Fund. I should explain this evening, I'm here really to create awareness, both of the foundation and of the Zero Hunger Fund, and give you a bit of a background on that for your discussions. And we'll hopefully have some time to do a few questions and answers at the end. So as I said, some of you may be familiar with the Rural Communities Foundation. We're one of approximately 200 foundations across, community foundations across the country. And here in Nova Scotia, we complement the work that's done by the Communities Foundation of Nova Scotia, which tends to focus on the larger urban communities, HRM, CBRM, while our focus is specifically on the rural areas of the province. We have a proven track record of developing and delivering grant programs to support a variety of local issues. We've been doing this for over 20 years. We are registered with CRA, with the Canada Revenue Agency, so we are accountable, we're transparent in our financial activities for fundraising and to the granting to our donors, our grantees, and to the community at large. We do not work in isolation. We're an active member of the Communities Foundation of Canada and for the Nova Scotia Not-for-Profit Coalition, as well as other organizations. We look at rural issues that are brought to us by community organizations, by municipal governments, such as yourself, by our own board members and by individuals. And our interest in these issues is driven by our mission to support sustainable rural communities and environments. We convene meetings of interested parties to discuss the issues, we raise funds, we provide grants to community organizations to support local issues. Here are a couple of our current and planned programs. We administer the Ukrainian Resettlement Fund on behalf of the Canada-Ukraine Foundation. And we distribute funds from the foundation to qualifying refugee families as they begin to rebuild their lives here in Canada, and specifically in our case, in Nova Scotia. Nova Scotians are obviously impacted by climate change, particularly with increasing storms, with sea level rise, with invasive species and more. The Joan Feyman Climate Change Fund was established with us by the family of Joan Feyman, who was a noted American astrophysicist and climate change activist, and has family connections back to Nova Scotia. And the fund provides matching funds for matching financial resources to ignite creativity, innovation, change through community projects addressing climate change. The Housing for Health Program is designed to make housing available to medical practitioners looking to move into a rural community. It's not just for doctors, it's for nurses, for lab techs, and other medical professionals. And in this case, we have individuals who have donated properties to us in the past. We sell those, but we either make the property available to an incoming medical professional or we sell it and put it in our reserve until there's a need for the funding. And of course, we do this and provide them, as we are a charitable organization, we provide a tax refund, which can be used on their CRA for their tax assessments. We, as I said, we do not keep a stock of housing. If there's an immediate need for housing, we'll go ahead with that. If not, we sell the property and hold the funds. The Soaring Eagle Funds Grant is a collaborative effort with a young and Cape Breton indigenous artist, Derek Drake Jensen. And these grants will support young two-spirit LGBTQ artists. And we're working out the details on that particular program. We'll start rolling out those grants in the first half of this year, 2024. We also organize and facilitate conferences that focus on province-wide issues such as climate change. Some of you may be familiar with the conference we organized last year, the Climate Commitments in Action Conference, which was held up in Member 2. And that highlighted the work of several Nova Scotian communities and the work that they're doing with climate change to create a more informed and supportive community. That brings us to the Dave Gunning Zero Hunger Fund. Now, we're currently raising funds for this program, which supports free pantries in schools across the province. And it differs from the provincially funded breakfast and snack programs in that this program provides supplies, primarily food, that kids could take home where they are often not getting nutritional value at home due to the challenges that families face. Students can access these supplies, which are provided in a nondescript backpack, in a discreet location in the school, such as a guidance councillor's office or perhaps in the library, so they're not subject to any judgment by other students. It's a very nondescript manner of providing the foods to them. The Zero Hunger Fund began actually with the support of the late Nova Scotian musician Bruce Guthro. But as Ruth's health was failing last year, he asked his good friend Dave Gunning to pick up the torch. And Dave has been wonderful in supporting the program. He's done a number of concerts where the funds have come directly to the fund, and he mentions us at all his other concerts. We can always tell when he's done the concert because the next morning we get a flurry of donations coming into the fund. Our goal is to raise $100,000 and that'll be used to provide grants of up to $5,000 per school. $5,000 being the number that we've been told by the schools is what it takes to get a fund up and running to stock the shelves of pantry. And approximately 80% of the schools in the province currently have these three pantries. And I think 100% of them wish they did. It's a challenge on the financial side, though, because the burden for this is falling on the teachers and the staff at the schools to be able to stock these pantries. As I said, they don't get any direct government funding from the province or the feds. So our intent is to support that program and lessen the burden on the school staff. We're currently at just over $50,000. That's been raised entirely from public donations. And I must say that it's been primarily done, our focus to date has really been in the northern counties, Picto, Antigone, Geisborough, and Richmond. We've not done too much promotion of the program as yet throughout the province, but we're going to continue doing that through the spring. And we'll be opening the program for great applications this spring, most of which is contained in these slides, which I didn't put up on the screen as I talked away here. So as I said, this is, coming today was to create awareness of the program, to create awareness of the Rural Communities Foundation. And I hope that in your discussions with individuals, with organizations, with corporations in the community, who may be looking for ways to support the challenges that we have in food security and for children to have, students to have proper nutrition, that you'll be able to think of this program and perhaps bring it to mind in your meetings with people and perhaps we'll be able to raise some more donors that way. So thank you for your attention and I'd be glad to address any questions you might have.
Perfect. Thank you. Any questions from members of council? Hi, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, so I know a lot of the schools have like a breakfast program. Can you comment whether they get any funding at all from the province on their breakfast program?
Yeah, the breakfast program is funded by the province.
Okay.
As are snack programs.
Yes.
And those are wonderful programs and very needed, but they're in-school programs.
Okay.
And what we're seeing, what we're hearing from teachers and school staff is that they see so many students who are coming to school whose attention perhaps is lacking due to a lack of proper nutrition at home. And particularly through weekends and through school breaks and so forth, it's a real problem. And the teachers recognize that and they're trying to support these by stocking these shelves, but the onus can't be, it's unsustainable for teachers to continue to do this. And so we're not trying to solve a problem, we're trying to support the solution.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you.
Other questions, councillor Colwell?
The Zero Hunger Fund, so it says it's currently focused on Antigone, Geisborough, Picto, and Richmond.
Yes.
Can local schools apply for the grant or will they have to wait until the future?
We have donations coming to us that people want to see spent directly in their own community. And so if somebody's granted us or donated $1,000 to us in Antigone, we will probably, and they specifically want that, we will ensure that that is held there. Other folks that have donated to us, particularly from a lot of Dave's concerts, really don't care where the money's being spent. So we will make it available province-wide, but we have to kind of adjudicate how to do that.
Okay.
But we also hope, of course, here on the South Shore, we'll raise funds here and we'll ensure that there are funds available for schools down here as well.
Did anyone else have questions? So that, I mean, that's great information, appreciate you coming and we'll probably figure out a way to mention it a few times just to spread the word and if we could make sure we get a link on how people can make donations, especially people who are looking to, if people are looking to have that pantry option locally, if there's a way for them to connect with your group so that they can target their donations, whether it's here or New Germany or somewhere in Lunenburg County, I think, to your point, I think it would be good to have that. So we can, if we can get that from you, I'm sure we'll be able to promote it.
Our, I should mention our board chair lives here in Bridgewater, so we'll make her available for any other questions.
Perfect. That's great. All right.
Well, thank you very much for your attention, I appreciate it and the opportunities we've given.
Great, thanks for coming, drive safe. We have the minutes from the January 15th, 2024, regular council meeting. Any errors or omissions with those? Hearing none, motion approved the minutes. Councillor McDonald, seconded by councillor Colwell, all those in favor? Motion is carried. We are down in planning items, land use bylaw, housekeeping amendments, definition of affordable housing. So we talked about this, we gave notice, do we give notice? Yeah, gave notice. No, we just said that, I think we discussed this certainly around the table and maybe it was a discussion session.
There was a development agreement application that council considered at our last meeting and gave notice of first consideration and staff advised that in order to enable the definition contained within the development agreement, we needed to look at amendments to our land use bylaw.
And here we are.
Thank you for that.
That's great.
Yes, so this is a staff-initiated housekeeping amendment, definition of affordable housing, with the intention of adding some clarity to the definition to include definitions per the Province of Nova Scotia or Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation. So the current land use bylaw definition is just straight-up affordable housing as housing which costs less than 30% of income. And that was first defined in the land use bylaw in 2014 with the new planning documents. And it was tied to a policy for a density bonus. And then in 2022, we made a series of changes to the planning documents, which we call the Housing Supply Amendments. And with that, it removed the tie between that density bonus policy and the definition in anticipation of a forthcoming, at that point in time, it was moving quite fast, changes to affordable housing, the development of a policy looking at our definition. However, that work was stalled due to staffing capacity challenges. So then we found ourselves in this situation where the development agreement that you gave consideration to at the last meeting is out of alignment with the definition and that the province and the federal government are the bodies that are responsible for and provide funding programs, et cetera, for affordable housing. So in discussion with the town solicitor, we're bringing forward an amendment to add the following words after that initial definition of 30% of household income, to add or defined by CMHC or the Province of Nova Scotia as affordable and as contained in a housing or financing agreement for a property party to a development agreement. So that it brings it all back together to that bonus density policy. And then this definition is reflected in that draft development agreement that you considered at the last meeting. As this is housekeeping, there was no requirement for public participation prior to your first consideration. There will be a public hearing in advance of second consideration, however.
Perfect. Questions from council? I know we've discussed this before. I know for me, I appreciate that this is a little bit more flexible than the one definition we had, and it also opens it up to have affordable housing as defined by people who are experts in affordable housing, as opposed to just a number that may or may not work. So I just, I mean, this is a very fluid situation that we're in from coast to coast to coast. So I think this really helps us be able to pivot situations well. So I appreciate staff seeing this and running with it. Are there any other questions? Is someone prepared to make a motion? Councillor Coglan?
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater hereby conduct first reading of the land use bylaw to amend as contained in Appendix A of Document 24-020 to add clarity to the definition of affordable housing, to include the definitions provided by the Province of Nova Scotia or the Canadian Mortgage and Housing Corporation, CMHC, and to proceed to a public hearing scheduled for a regular council meeting on February 26, 2024 at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Seconded by councillor McDonald, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. Down to Correspondence for Action, and we have the Remo 2024-25 Budget Approval. And Angela's joining us because for the first time in a long time, we're talking about an additional staff person. I'm sure Angela's going to explain all the details as to the why. I don't think it will come to a surprise, as a surprise to folks, that we've had a few more emergencies, certainly 2023. Angela was, to say she was wrong on her feet would be an understatement, between the fires and the floods and storms. So it's just a lot and it also limits what else can be done with programs and education and stuff like that. So I don't want to say everything that you were probably going to say, Angela, so I'll turn it over to you to just maybe go through the budget, the highlight, like the highlights that you were going to present and the change and why.
Okay, sure, thank you. So as they mentioned, some of the past wildfires and shelter in Barrington, as well as obviously the unprecedented floods here in July, really presented us with opportunities for improvement. So I presented several reports and after-action to advisory, and the recommendation at the time was to bring the projects forward in the budget cycle. So as I was going through budget cycle, I decided to present two budgets, kind of a core and an enhance. The core is really to just get us through the regular, non-project-related recommendations and keep business as usual for the regular emergency management program. And then the enhanced would be to really work on a lot of the new projects that were presented in the after-action reports from the wildfires and floods and things like that. So the recommendation that was approved at advisory was to present to the partner councils on the core budget, so that's what I'll speak most on. So this one here, it's going to include an additional staff person, so one additional full-time staff, and will be trained to support the Emergency Coordination Centre when it's activated. So it allows me to have some time off and it also gets integrated into the whole Remo team to be able to work with the CAOs who are on-call and activated in the Coordination Centre as well. Obviously, following the onboarding, they're going to work on community preparedness and presentations, the new staff, the ready training that we've incorporated, they'll assist with the regular business that Remo has. So the new staff person obviously comes with salary benefits, laptop phone, MiFi to travel, professional development, all of those types of things. We've also, in the Remo team, following the July floods, we've increased the training and development, or training and exercises within the actual team, and we've changed that to monthly, so that's going to have some costs associated with it. Some of the costlier items that are in the budget would be, we've included some engineering work as a pre-work to work toward getting a facility that can accommodate a shelter generator. So currently, we have no shelter that meets the criteria of a generator. We have the NSCC, but the NSCC only has a small generator, which sources approximately four shops rooms on one wing. Other than that, we don't have a large facility that has a generator. So ultimately, the goal will be to get a generator for a building or multiple buildings. And so we're going to work with an engineer to kind of help scale out some work for us. So that's included into this core budget. Additionally, we've included some communications work, so a contractor can support our communications team with regular programming and then also in an emergency, and the deep-ready staff training. So we're trying to get approximately 300 staff from all of the five municipal units trained, just to have a better understanding of what emergency management is, how Remo acts, and then when we actually activate, where they might be called in to assist. One of the other items that is a bit larger is trunk mobile radios. So these are the radios that the province has provided to us in the past. However, the province is rolling a new system and we will only get the amount of radios that they provided to us as a return. So they provided us 10 radios in the past, however, we've currently got 17, so there is an increase on the radios. I have broken out the cost, so in the core budget, it would be to increase it for four radios this current, and then either in the enhanced, if we were to have chosen that, or into next year, I'll present some additional radios for that. We will need to work to make sure that just our core staff get their radios, so we'll work toward that, but I think with the 13 will be set within that number. Other things in the budget, I've kept the search and rescue amount the same, I haven't received their financial statements, so their cost has stayed the same at $10,000, and we have not increased the contingency funds at this time. So I presented the budget to the CAOs and they felt that they could support the core budget this year. For understanding what was in the enhanced, it would have included an additional FTE, so that would have been a third person. And it would have captured some of the projects that were in the after-action report, like getting that capital cost of a shelter generator, working on a volunteer roster, a vulnerable persons registry was discussed. We've currently sent it up to the province as well as NSFM to ask if the province could take that on. What we're hearing at this time is it's not, however, we'll see, because there's quite a few municipal units that are considering it, but we'd obviously need some funding for it. And then really blow our perspective on evacuation rates. So after the Barrington-Shelbourne fire, we saw that Highway 103 was closed due to the main bridge being destroyed. And so we really want to look at what the evacuation rates for our area would be, including backroads, some of the smaller roads, also the one-way in and one-way out, to make sure that we've got some good egress and things. And then finally to that, we've also added an additional amount for a communications contractor to be able to support all of those new programs that we'd be rolling out. So that's a little bit of what the difference is. Advisory did agree to, that we would present, oh, sorry, the motion was to present the core budget to the partner municipalities, and Bridgewater's portion would be $50,365.64. Open to questions?
Questions from council? And for clarification, that $50,000 is our total contribution, it's not the increase, the increase is $29,140.
Uh, yes.
So, because, and this is, you know, it's five municipalities in Lunenburg County, so we share the, we share the burden of all this. Councillor Colwell?
Excuse me, so the budget for administration is out for
So the budget for administration is now from $142,000 to $315,000. So I understand there's an extra full-time employee in there would make up a lot of that, but then it says computers, phones, four TMRs, increased comms support, but those aren't broken down? I'm wondering, are a lot of these one-time expenses that would be, that budget line would be decreased next year? Can you explain that?
Yeah, so with the new staff person, that also increased in the current year based on NODL's policy, my salary as well. So I moved into a manager role, so that's an increase in salary and benefits in that line item. Some of, the computers and phones for the individual is definitely a one-time. The increased comms support, I'm not sure if that will be a one-time. In all honesty, it's going to depend upon how much we actually have to utilize that person for regular programming as well as any of the emergencies that we have. We currently use all of the communications teams from the five municipal units, however, with the increase in disasters that we've been having and regular messaging on social media, we've been utilizing a lot of their staff time, and so we have to recognize that there's a balance to that as well. So I'm not sure if that would decrease, or if it will stay the same, or if it can be removed. It really will depend on what the next year holds.
Other questions? Does that help? Just clarification? Yep.
Angela, just so that we understand the core, the core is basically, I call it keeping the lights on, but it's maintaining the status quo in terms of service level with some additional training and the generator engineering piece being scoped out. But for the most part, the core results in the need. In order to keep the status quo, lights on, we need that extra position to provide that support, is what you're essentially saying.
Yes, yes, that's correct. So with all of the new things that have been coming out from the after-action reports, as well as the amount of responses that we've been having, it's been reducing my time to be able to work on that core program, so that's why we're increasing to an additional staff person, correct?
Other questions? Counselor Thorburn?
Just a couple of, yeah, our share was 29,000, now it's 5365, so that's more than doubled. But the cost of operating in '24, '25 has gone up pretty near double, a little over double as well. It went from 192 to 410. So the biggest share is coming from the bigger municipalities, because it's all based on population. So we really are getting a pretty good deal. And at our meeting, all councils voted in favor of this budget.
Correct, yep.
So the core budget, we didn't go with the enhanced one. We're just trying to keep the lights on and keep up with the demand placed by us because of the catastrophes we're having in our area. So if need be, I would make that motion.
If you want to put a motion for it, that'd be great, and then we can continue with questions?
I would move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the '24, '25 operation budget for Remo in the amount of $410,418, with the town of Bridgewater's share being $50,365.64, as presented in document number 24-015.
Okay, I do have a seconder, Counselor Tanner, and then you have a question?
Just one more question. Angela, did I hear you correctly when you said that the province has no interest in currently funding a vulnerable persons registry? Okay, thank you.
You heard me correct, unfortunately, yes. So it's had a lot of talk since the Halifax wildfires, and since then Halifax has rolled out their own vulnerable persons registry. Case County was the first one to roll it out a few years ago. Since Fiona, actually, I think is when it really got a lot of traction in the Antigone and Cape Breton area. At the time, the province was considering it, but staff at Nova Scotia EMO have made the recommendation to the minister to not increase it and to take that project on. They really feel it should be left at the municipal level. Municipalities are obviously asking for some support. It would be great if we had one overarching vulnerable persons registry in the province so that there's not a lot of differences between each, but it's at this time not looking like they're going to make the change. However, several municipalities have been writing up. I think Pictock County was the first one that had sent some information out to the municipalities, asking a resolution to be made up to the province. And then within our Remo, it was also recommended that all of the five municipal units also send something up. So that's run into the partnering EMO. Bridgewater has already passed that motion, but at this time, it's looking like they are not interested in it, not that it won't change. We can hope that it will.
So I can just add that I had a Public Safety Committee meeting for the NSFM today, and this topic was on the agenda. So recognizing that the province isn't really, it's not really fair to say that they're not interested. At this time, they're not going to create a province-wide vulnerable persons registry, but I think where we left it with the NSFM committee was NSFM is going to bring in some of the municipal units that already have the registry in place and talk about best practices, what's working, what's not working. And then I think where our ask to the province will be is, is, this is going to, as Angela said, it should be one template. It should be, it's going to require a piece of software, well, it should be the same piece of software for every municipality, because the reality is that people move, and what you don't want is to kind of drop the ball, because you've got 10 different systems, or worst case, 50 different systems, and then you have an emergency and someone gets missed. So if you have one system and a series of, you know, everyone has a license to that same system, it just will make it easier. That's going to, that will definitely require the province to be part of that, whether they create it or they just help fund it. I think there's a role for them to play. But the next step is the NSFM bringing in those municipal units that are doing it and seeing where to go from there, because we definitely need it. There's a question there.
Other questions for Angela? Okay, we have a mover and a seconder. Ready for the question?
Question.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Now down to 8.2, Lunenburg County Accessibility Advisory Committee appointments. So Ellen came and made the recommendation to the mayors and wardens of Lunenburg County, and the recommendation is coming back to each of the municipal units for Carrie Novak and Louise Hopper to be appointed to the committee. Deputy Mayor, yes, please.
Would you like me to make a motion?
Awesome.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Lunenburg County Accessibility Advisory Committee and appoint Gregory Novak and Louise Hopper to the Lunenburg County Accessibility Advisory Committee, each for a term of three years, effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor McDonald. Further discussion?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried, and now's probably a good time to thank Ellen for all the work that she's putting into this, again, for all the municipal units across the region working together on this. Down to business arising, unfinished business. We have the grant organization policy and some changes. So I see Cara is here joining us, so I'll turn that over to you.
Hello, good evening, thank you. So this report and policy change originates from the March 27, 2023 meeting of council. So the amendment to Policy 77 includes a more robust operational funding model, reporting requirements and caps on grant requests as per the policy contained in Appendix A. So the two kind of big things that came from that council direction were to look at operational funding and thus a budget increase, and then as a part of the process, kind of simplified and revamped the policy a little bit, so I'll go through a few of those key changes. So those first two elements, the operational stream. So council has indicated the desire to have organizations who are applying for operational funding year after year be made a part of the town budget. And as per provincial legislation, this money would still be considered a grant to an organization. For ease of the overall process, staff have worked with the Grant to Organizations Committee to develop a multi-year operational funding stream within the town of Bridgewater's Policy 77, Grants to Organizations, to address long-term financial support to organizations while still ensuring accountability. And so this three-year proposal would mean that applicants, applicants will have to kind of refine and allow for a more equitable chance for other organizations to enter into that model as well. Then the element of the budget increase, so the 2022, 23, and 23, 24 Grants to Organizations budget were $29,000 each fiscal year, and the financial ask for '22, '23 was $132,962.15. And the financial ask for this budget year thus far, considering, keeping in mind that there's only been one deadline this year, was $115,432.25. So quite large asks compared to the budget. And an increase of the operational budget by, sorry, Grants to Organizations operational budget by $15,000 per year is a part of the proposed request. So some of the more, the smaller elements are moving from three grant options to two operational grants to assist in funding the operations of organizations delivering programs or services to residents and/or businesses in the town of Bridgewater, and project grants to assist in funding activities, programs, events, or equipment that will benefit the residents of the town of Bridgewater. We have removed the in-kind requests from the policy. We have implementing limits to financial requests for each grant with the desire for transparency with organizations on the capacity of our funding. We've had some extremely large asks that we weren't unable to accommodate in the past. So operational grants would now be to a max of $5,000 per year, and project grants are up to a max of $3,000 per year, with the option of going beyond these amounts by council discretion. Organizations can now apply for operational funding, funding up to three years at a time with a more robust reporting requirement. And then applications for informal groups will no longer be considered, typically a nonprofit or registered charity. Applications for funding activities taking place prior to the grant deadline will not be funded. Funding requests cannot exceed 50% of the total budget. The previous amount was set at 75%. The deadline would change from twice per year to once per year, so we would have one deadline, which would be March 1st annually, which will allow for the funds to be decided upon and distributed all at once. March 1st would put us in line with MODAL's deadline, and this would also, so we'd get the request prior to the budget being decided upon for the year, and so it would also give us a little room to potentially consider something funded beyond the maximum that would go into the budget. So it just gives us a little more flexibility there. And then we would distribute the funds once the budget was passed in April. Budgets will be required for all grants, and the grant criteria evaluation form will be implemented for the juring process, just to ensure fairness during the juring process. And reporting will be required for all grants with a deadline of January 31st unless an extension is requested, and as I mentioned, the yearly reports for multi-year operational So as a part of this transition, we have the unspent amount of money from this year, as we will be transitioning from doing a March 1 deadline, and we are awarding it prior to April 1st, to having a March 1 deadline and awarding it in the next fiscal budget. So we'll have like a bit of cushion amount as we transition, since we didn't spend our whole budget in this year. I think that's everything. Does anyone have any questions?
Great, thank you. Questions from anyone around the council table? Counselor Caldwell?
So in the past, I've worked with an organization that awarded grants, and although most nonprofits operate on a shoestring, sometimes they have quite a large surplus saved up. So I noticed that the policy requires budgets, but do we also require financial statements so that the organization can display a financial need?
Yes, and it's not listed in the changes because it was already in the original policy. So we do require to look at the financial need, and that's a part of also creating the juring process and the scorecard. That is also part of our kind of scorecard and our criteria, is that the organization needs to demonstrate financial need.
Okay, one more question. So 4.2D, if you can scroll to that, it seems at odds with supplying operational funding. It says long-term operational consideration will not be given to long-term operational expenses of an established organization, except in an emergency?
Sorry, are you looking at the proposed new budget?
The policy?
The proposed new policy?
Yeah.
And what, which line was it?
4.2D.
I think that's the old one that you're looking at.
That's the old one.
Yeah, so if you keep scrolling, you'll see the new one, yeah.
Okay, I was looking at the wrong one. Okay.
Other questions around the table? Would you like to make? Yes, please, thank you.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater, A, repeal Policy 77 Grants to Organizations dated November 24, 2014, effective immediately, and B, approve the new Policy 77 Grants to Organizations as presented in document 24-007, effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Thorburn. Further discussion?
Question.
Counselor Coglan, yeah?
Excuse me. Just, I guess one concern that I have is the elimination of the second intake period and where we're going to just one annual intake period for the GTO here. I guess with the timing, like, my opinion, I'm just concerned that it would exclude a lot of winter sports teams, sports programs, because if we're looking at an intake period of, say, March or April, that typically is at the end of a winter sports season, and really, I mean, they, I mean, these organizations wouldn't really get organized for the following season until like September or October. That's, yeah, that's the only thing that kind of sticks out for me.
Okay, I don't know if there's an explanation more than, I know that it does align us more with MODAL. I believe they have just the one intake. I think Chester, I know Chester doesn't.
They have two.
They have two. I think some of the others have one intake.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I understand, you know, the benefits of going to just a single intake period once a year, but I'm just concerned it may, it may narrow the field of the organizations that we're trying to benefit here.
No point well taken. Other questions or comments? Counselor Caldwell?
Would organizations that typically apply be notified of the changes?
Yeah, we would have to notify our list of organizations and do a little bit more of a broader communication with respects to it as well.
Okay, that's good. Other questions, comments? Okay, we have a mover and a seconder. Ready for the question?
Question.
Question being called. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Thank you, Cara. Now we are down to amendments to Policy 89 fees for the Colin Barren. Notice was given at the January 15 council meeting for these changes.
Okay, thank you. Just let me get organized here. Okay, so yes, we are bringing forward a request for some new fees related to the cemetery. So earlier- So we've had two. I can't remember when those were installed, but we only have about eight niches left in the existing two. So this year, the town installed two new ones that we're calling units three and four. And so we're bringing forward fees to reflect the new costs of these recently installed columbarium. So proposing that the fees for units three and four with HST would be about 35, would be $3,500. And to keep the fee at the current price for units one and two, which is $2,900 with HST. One of the issues that staff have uncovered is that some people who have already bought in units one and two would like to move to units three and four, which is an administrative challenge. So we are also requesting the establishment of a new administrative fee of about $600 plus HST, so $690, to be applied if a current owner wishes to sell their unit in one or two, because they must sell it back to the town, and then purchase a new one in unit three or four. And that that fee would remain in place for a period of 12 months. So there's like a 12 month, so that people who might sell unit one and two wouldn't then, two weeks later, come back and purchase three and four. And all of the same administrative burden exists, even if that happens. But also then we're fearful that the units one and two would have a bit of an exodus and would not get fully used. The overall issue around process and that we require people to sell back to the town and things like that is something that we're looking at with a revised cemetery bylaw that we need to bring back separately. So we've been working on that and looking at all the rules in place for purchasing and ownership and, and passing on ownership to plot in the cemetery or a niche that somebody may own. As you can appreciate, cemeteries are very, very challenging because sometimes you might go decades between somebody purchasing and then somebody coming back with needing to inter remains, or it might be a different generation that is looking to utilize the family plot. And so there's a lot of things that we are trying to consider in the revised cemetery bylaw that we'll be bringing back. So further in that, reviewing these fees, we also realize that the lot transfer fee that is currently in place is $21. And that's when you're transferring the official ownership of a lot. So that's a traditional burial lot from one person to another, a member of the family. And we are requesting an increase to that fee. And we also realize there is no fee in place for, because right now the cemetery is sold. If you're a resident of town, you pay one price. And if you're a resident outside of town, you pay a different price for lots. And, and so we're suggesting that the, the lot transfer fee also reflect that differential in price. So those are the, the four requests that you have in front of you. Have I missed anything? I think that's it. Any questions?
Council Caldwell?
So if I understand this correctly, demand for the top two rows is greatest, which is causing some challenges. So why not charge a premium for the top two rows as opposed to the bottom?
That is another option.
I'd like to see that.
You'd like to see that? Okay, we could take that back. We also have a, I mean, we, you could do that.
I think it's a great idea.
I mean, feel free to change the recommendations in the, in this. That's no problem.
Yep.
At your discretion.
Council Conklin?
Okay, so our, our existing fees, are we anywhere close to covering our costs with the existing fees or?
Well, it depends on how you define covering cost. And I say that simply because the cost for the columbarium also includes the perpetual care cost, right? So the cost is hard to determine, an absolute cost. It covers the cost of the purchase and the installation of the columbarium, yes. Costs of engraving are included in that cost and of the opening, so you can inter two remains. Those are, those are included. We, from the math that we've done, it, it recovers those costs. And then there's also the cost of maintenance, ongoing operations and maintenance, which, you know, we own, we own the cemetery and I don't see a future where we don't. So I don't know how we would actually determine the full cost recovery.
My understanding from my many years when I was on Parks and Rec was when we brought in the columbarium, yes, we recovered our fees. We don't when we intern someone in the ground, in, in a plot. Because there's always that, the work is so much more, right? Cutting the grass and all those things. But the columbarium, I believe we, you may remember more than I do, Amanda, just, it seemed to carry its own a little bit better. That was, that was my recollection. That's how, because I remember it being presented to the town as this is what people want as opposed to being buried. And so when the presentation was made all those years ago, if my memory still serves me, the business model for it made sense, as long as you keep the fees up with inflation and things like that. So, or demand, right? So the two things, as you said, the top two rows are in demand, which makes the other ones less in demand. And so we want this to be fully utilized. And so we may need to offset by having a premium for the top two rows and a lower price for the bottom ones, but.
I'd suggest that the, the bottom remain at the proposed rate. And if you wanted to slightly increase for the, the premium, the penthouse, if you wish.
So the bottom, okay, so the current rate.
Units one and two?
Yeah. So that would be the old rate.
Correct.
Yep.
So for this new, for a new columbarium, I'm guessing the cost is probably significantly more than the last time we purchased one?
The new one has a new rate, is a different rate.
That's why we've developed the new rate.
Okay, so units, or.
I know, it's confusing.
Units one and two.
Correct.
In the new columbarium.
We're calling those just straight up, units three and four, to keep it. So there's units one and two, which were the first columbarium. They have a set rate, which was increased pre-COVID, I don't know, maybe 2018 or 2019, after they'd been in place for about, I want to say 10 years, but I'm relying on people who've been here longer than I have.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
It's about right. So units one and two, after about 10 years, we did increase the rate modestly, based on the cost of everything else increasing. And so these new units, which we're now calling three and four.
Three and four, okay, I got you.
The new rate was, was proposed, it was worked out by staff between the cemetery operator and the town accountant. They looked at the, the costs and everything and, and determined what a reasonable new rate would be so that we'd be recovering cost. So that's why it's, it's a bit higher now.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So in terms of, of process and Council Caldwell's suggestion, is it, is it better to just approve the, the fees as presented and, and staff go back and we amend them again? Or would you like to make that suggestion?
If you have a suggested, like a certain percentage higher for the first two rows, then you can do that. Or if you want staff to bring back options, then you can, I guess, approve these changes and then we can bring back further amendments at a later date. So it's really.
What are your thoughts, Council Caldwell, since?
Perhaps staff could bring back options at a later date to consider.
Okay.
I think would be appropriate.
Yep, that works. Are there any other questions on this, Council? Just out of curiosity, I may have missed it in the report, but did we do any comparison against other units, so to speak, like Halifax?
Oh, Halifax is way beyond, way, like a lot more.
Are they?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Like in the thousands more than what's proposed here.
Okay, but I guess on the tiered structure?
Yes, they, sometimes they have it, there's a wide range. But yeah, we did look, but the Halifax costs are significantly higher than what we have here. And some cemeteries are, as I understand it, I didn't put the information in the report, but as I understand it, some do have tiered system where it is higher. And they have different systems for how they fund it, things like that. So, I mean, a lot of them are private cemeteries.
Okay. Any other questions? Some prepared to make a motion? Do you need the motion to also include the wording of direct staff to?
No, we'll do that as a separate motion.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So just the motion, this, Council Caldwell?
I move the town council for the town of Bridgewater, approve the amendments to policy 89 fees as presented in document 24-011 with respect to fees associated with the Brookside Cemetery, effective immediately.
Thank you. Seconded by Council McDonald. We've had a good discussion. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Can I have a motion to direct staff to review, I don't know, to?
To, to bring back a report providing options for the first two rows of units three and four for pricing?
Yep, all right, perfect. Moved by Council McDonald, seconded by Council Caldwell. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you so much. We are going to skip down the budget because I believe, down the agenda, because I believe our budget was a set time item for seven o'clock. Am I correct, Pat? Did we advertise budget for seven?
We didn't, but that is historically what we've done.
Oh, okay.
Well, then we don't need to.
Well, if we didn't, then we'll just, we'll just run along through the agenda then. Sorry to mess things up for you. But, wow, our director of community development is coming back. I'll just remind the public that we are in budget season. We are going to be doing a number of talk Bridgewater's. The date has not been set, but we will be out on more than one occasion. It will be well advertised and we traditionally do them all in the LCLC, but we'll, we'll make sure that information gets out there. And, but if you can't make any of those sessions, you can always come to a council meeting as budget will be on the agenda quite often. Or you can reach out to any one of us on council, phone, email. Just send us a message if you have questions. The draft budget, when it is available, will be posted publicly. We're not quite there yet for the full, you know, deal. So let's continue on then. And reports and recommendations, the hemlock, will he, age?
Adelged.
Adelged?
The bug.
Adelged, I feel like it's going to sing like amazingly well.
HWA.
Yeah, all right. This is not a good news topic, but I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, so if you recall, staff came to you in late November with a request to submit a proposal, a funding proposal to the Provincial Sustainable Communities Challenge Fund, second round of funding, to support what we were calling the Bridgewater Hemlock Preservation Project. So we discovered the hemlock, will he adelged? Bug, the bug, HWA, in our parks. And HWA has a 95% mortality rate if it infests a hemlock, mature hemlock tree. And so we are destined to lose our hemlocks if we don't intervene in some capacity. So council approved the application. We do not yet have word on that grant application. We had hoped we would know earlier than now. We have included costs in the proposed budget, which has not yet made its way to you. And we do have a current person on staff right now who has been assisting with project coordination. Their contract is set to end on March 15th. And we're funding that through some cost savings due to some of the staffing changes that we had in the community development department this year. So we're funding it with some of the, in that way. So basically, I'm coming tonight to see if you would consider preapproving some operational budget to support the coordinator position so that now, so that we know that now, so that we can have some continuity. If we wait until budget is debated and passed in April and we fully find out about the, the success of our project, then we will be trying to find a coordinator and a strike team. The strike team being the people who will be out in the woods in our, in our parks applying the pesticides in a three-week window to get the project started as of the beginning of May. Because we're reliant in our proposal right now on summer students. And we have grants in for those summer student positions. But that's how we're relying on, on trying to find the most cost-effective way to treat the hemlock trees in our parks. So basically, it's about that continuity and that ability to start the planning now. During the strategic priority discussion, it was, it didn't fall on, and I think that's coming later in the agenda tonight, everything's well aligned, I guess, that it's, it's a priority, but it didn't fall into your big buckets of priorities because there was a, you know, well, we need to do this. So it didn't necessarily get some of those votes to land on the big chart. So just asking, and you know, may or may not want to preapprove some of that at this point in time, but we thought best to ask. So there's several options to consider to fund the coordinator position for six months. So from, say, mid-March until the end of September. And that's approximately $32,000 for all the employer contribution costs at what we've estimated the salary to be, but all of that work still needs to come. To fund it per the grant application, which would be all the way to December 31st, 2025, which would be a significant investment, depending on, you know, we don't have the outcome of the grant yet. And defer the full project to the budget deliberation process. Those are the three staff options.
Okay. Well, we know, we know the details on, on what this invasive species does, so there's no debating that part, but it's how we tackle that. So thoughts around the council table? So there's a couple of options there. What's council's wish? Someone wants to put a motion on the floor or have a question?
A question. So six-month approval, would that be enough to keep a coordinator? Just recognizing the fact that we have to do something because we will lose the hemlocks and the cost of removing them once we've lost them is absolutely unattainable. And I would hate to lose the momentum now that I understand the life cycle of the, the bugs and so on, and how crucial it is to, to have that timing down if we lose that momentum and that flow. Will six months keep the coordinator? Or is that not going to be a long enough term to keep somebody on board?
I think with the, I didn't propose this as a means of, of extending the, the current staff. That would be ideal, but I, you know, from a, but there's processes and things like that to go through. So it will provide, I think we're supposed to find out about the grant in time. It will provide some of that. We can create that position and post and hire for something with a six-month position with opportunity to renew dependent upon the grant. So it enables that ability to start that work now when people are looking for work, especially, you know, a new graduate, et cetera. The timing is really like in this moment. In April, it will be too late. So that was the intention. That allows us to do that prep work, have a coordinator in place prior to getting the summer staff in place. So there's no, it's, you know, just sort of thinking beyond sort of who we have on staff at this moment. We're thinking for the project and the ability to maintain the momentum of the project and how the timing is pretty critical to be able to hit that window for treatment of the hemlock trees.
Other questions? Someone, oh, Council Thorburn, yeah?
Yeah, we just had another presentation last Tuesday night and I learned a little bit more, but like Jennifer said, the older trees are the one that's most affected. The younger ones, we think that they've got a control on that, but the older ones, and to have to get rid of all those older trees, you're looking at $89 million plus, which is a lot more than solid waste, wastewater. So I don't think we have much of an option, but to try and keep as many of those hemlocks alive as we can. And to me, it would only make sense that we will approve this position.
The environmental impact of the loss of all those trees would be catastrophic. You think of the heat that is absorbed in the summer because of the tree canopy that we have. Just think about, think about that. If, if the temperature rises in our town, people require more electricity for their equipment, like it's just a huge cycle of, you try to lift people out of energy poverty and the town gets warmer, then they need more energy in order to keep their house cool. Like it, it has an environmental impact and an economic impact. And that doesn't even include the removal of the trees if they die. Like it's just, it's a, I just, I hope that we get the funding because I don't know how you find a more important project at this moment than. Because I don't know how you find a more important project at this moment than saving potentially hundreds of thousands of trees from an invasive species. That is not going to just stop here, right? It's going to work its way from tip to tip of the province, wiping out an industry. Because that's the other part, like, yeah, we don't, we don't have a forest industry in Bridgewater, but there's a pretty robust one around the province. Anyway, someone prepared to make a motion. Counsel Thorburn, thank you.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Community Development Department and grant pre-budgetary approval for a six-month term position to coordinate Bridgewater Hemlock Preservation, Preservation Project at an estimated cost of $32,000 as proposed in document number 23 dash 182.
Thank you, seconded by Counsel, everybody. Counsel McDonald, I saw first. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. That was a first. I don't think I've had everyone second something before.
You don't get that very often.
Our next item is requests for a grant to the Designated Communities Fund for the Bridgewater Curling Club. And just a reminder again to the public that this isn't the town giving a grant. This is people who have come to the town and made a donation in the Curling Club's name and the town kind of holds that and then releases those funds as per requested. Someone prepared to make a motion for that. Counsel Caldwell, thank you.
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve a grant through the Designated Communities Fund program in the amount of $34,975 to the Bridgewater Curling Club for two capital projects that are planned for the summer of 2024.
Thank you, seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried. 10.3 is giving notice for Policy 96 facade improvement amendments. I'd like to quickly touch on that.
Yeah, so these amendments are to reflect the recent decision with respects to the downtown planning advisory committee and kind of putting that on hold, given the priorities that the town has and are working on. And this would remove the, the DPAC from the facade policy in terms of being responsible for the guide review and manual design review and moving that to the Heritage Advisory Committee and then taking the responsibility for reviewing facade applications from the DPAC and bringing that to staff to review and recommend to council. So they're, as they say, they're really to reflect some recent decisions with respects to the committee. And these would be, if council agrees, considered at the next council meeting.
All right. Any questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Deputy Mayor Fager, thank you.
I'm going to motion your worship. I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater give notice pursuant to Section 48 of the Municipal Government Act that at the February 12th, 2024 council meeting, amendments to Policy 96, which is Bridgewater facade improvements, will be considered to remove the downtown planning advisory committee, also known as DPAC, from the policy, transfer its former responsibility of guide review and manual design to the Heritage Advisory Committee in conjunction with staff and transfer its former responsibility for application review and recommendations to staff.
Thank you, seconded by Counsel Conklin. Discussion, so this is going to come back February 12th. All those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. 10.4, Energy Management Information System, staff or EMIS, as it is known.
Probably getting sick of me by now. Yes, so in the report that you have in front of you, it's fairly short and concise, so we're continuing to progress with the Energy Monitoring or Energy Management Information System, EMIS. And as we were planning for the 2425 budget and looking at where we are right now, we're best positioned to continue with the resources that we have. And we currently have three data science analysts on that are doing the vast majority, working with the senior energy manager and doing a lot of the heavy lifting on the EMIS, receiving the work from our overseas, or our, our overseas, but our, our external vendor. In losing their contracts for two of the three, the contracts are set to expire at the end of April, at the time last fall, we, EMIS seems to be the project where we can see about three months clearly in the future. And it's hard to see, you know, a full, we're getting clarity now. Now we can see like 12 months in the future, but at that point in time, we couldn't really see that long-term and there's been lots of ups and downs. But what we do know is that the private market for the types of services that we need would far exceed our budget capacity and that we'd be well-suited to maintain our in-house resources than we would be to go out to our external vendors to have this, this work continue external to the town. So we're asking for that pre-budget approval to extend their contracts to the end of the project. The ACOA funding, so we have funding from the Atlantic Canada Opportunities Agency for this EMIS component of our energized Bridgewater project. And that funding agreement expires at the end of this next fiscal year. So that extension would align to the end of the funding that we have to support the work.
Any questions on that, Counsel Tanner?
Yeah, having been in the software development business for a number of years, you're sure that this project is going to end or be completed before April 2025?
It depends on how we define end.
Yeah, I don't mean, yeah.
Yep, exactly. So not necessarily, but the plan right now is that we won't be, well, we don't have, we'll be in a position one way or the other at the end of next year when the funding runs out, to have it, we're going to be, bring forward a much more robust update as to where we are with the, with EMIS right now. So we do have the first couple sensors in homes for the test homes and we are testing the, the software and the interface. We're just starting that work right now. So our goal is that we should have it. And one of the data science analysts has a longer-term contract than the others, so.
So what happens if funding does run out and the project is not fully tested, fully in production?
That's a big risk. That's a risk that we haven't figured out exactly how to mitigate yet, but it's been one that we have identified and so we're working really hard to not be in that position. It's the best answer I can give you right now and it's.
Yeah, it's not a, yeah.
Yeah.
It's not a good place to be.
No, but we are getting much closer to production, so we are entering the field testing phase right now. And with the goal of being in production within four to six months.
The fact that there's, there's test units already in place is, that was kind of the moment I was waiting for, because I was a little nervous about if, if we just kept getting delayed and getting delayed and we didn't even have like any pilot units out. So you said you will, you expect to be in production in four to six months? Four, six months from today?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So there's a bit of a buffer in there. Buffer? Okay. You got to think positively. Yeah, I've been there.
We will bring much deeper information to you at a, at a next, well, not at the next, but at a near-future council meeting, so we're preparing that. We are waiting till we can actually provide you with a demo, which we're hoping to have shortly.
Yeah, so that, that hopefully will help us know more.
And you can ask the, the people who can provide the answers in greater detail on the technical level, they'll be here to be able to provide those to you. So I'm not your best person.
So save your, write that question down, is a good question.
Well, I would have more questions for that.
I know.
Yeah, that's fine.
No, but it's good, it's a good question. Appreciate you asking. Any other questions? Someone prepared to make a motion? Counsel McDonald, thank you.
I move that Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the extension of two data science analyst positions for a one-year term ending March 31st, 2025, to support the ongoing development of the Energy Management Information System technology component of the energized Bridgewater project.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fager for the discussion. None, all those in favor? Those opposed, motion is carried, thank you. 10.5, Collective Agreement with Bridgewater Police Association Local 108. I'm going to declare a conflict and ask the deputy mayor to jump in this chair and then just for a little bit more separation on my own comfort, I'm actually going to go into the other room. Just, it just makes me feel better. I don't know if it makes you feel better, but maybe Donald will come get me when we're, when this topic's done. So I'll just turn it over to you.
As Mayor Mitchell said, our next item is the collective agreement from the Bridgewater Police Association Local 108 of Atlantic Police Association. So I'll turn it over to our CAO.
Okay, so the collective agreement between the Atlantic Police Association and the town of Bridgewater expires March 31st, 2024. A bargaining team met on November 24th to negotiate a new collective agreement. Council has reviewed this as part of contract negotiations in camera. And the, the bargaining unit as well has, has reviewed this as well. And my understanding is the bargaining unit has approved the changes. And it's here tonight for council's final approval. Just some quick highlights of, of the changes. The collective agreement itself, the members in the bargaining unit are 44. I have a list of acronyms there as they all have titles that are, been shortened to acronyms. And for, for those who try to follow along, it will help you understand what, what they mean. Just quickly, we made some changes that are being proposed, which would see a four-day work week for certain positions be created. So that'd be a compressed work week, same amount of hours, just in a four-day period. And so that, those would be for positions that normally work a five, five-day work week, they'd work a four-day work week at 10-hour shifts. So there's no financial impact to that. For those who work a 12-hour shift, we're looking at some changes there that would, instead of paying them for 3.5% on top of their annual salary for stat pay, we'd be looking at leave time. And the employer would actually save some money there in terms of pension contributions not being required. We're adding the National Day of Truth and Reconciliation as a stat holiday. And Article 17 is being revised to look at some, some new recruitment methods in terms of when we recruit senior individuals, being able to recognize some of their years of service when we're looking at vacation entitlement more as an enticement for recruitment. We are removing the ability to accrue benefits while on WCB. So that's a benefit to the employer. We're providing pregnancy top-up for those on pregnancy leave, up to 100%, and that would be through the use of a sick day bank that they would have accumulated, up to a maximum of 30 days, the equivalency in hours. And if they don't have a bank, then there would be no top-up. The wages negotiated, it's a five-year contract. And you can see that we made some changes to the communication technicians to align them a little bit better with the percentage of constable salaries. So we have a classification from zero to 12 months. And then we have five to 10 years and they would be at 55% of a constable salary and then 10, 10-plus years would be at 60% of a constable salary. So there's been a jump in the communication technician's base and then the percentage increases would be applied to that. So the wage increases that have been negotiated are 4% in next fiscal year, 3.75, 3.5, 3, and 3. And the financial impact, the wages have an impact, including benefits, over the five-year period of $879,000. There has been perhaps, with recognizing years of service, we, we estimate that there would be a potential of $1,210 per new employee in terms of cost if they came with those years of service. And then there's some savings that we would recognize as well. So with removal of the ability to accrue benefits on WCB and then using leave time instead of holiday pay, there is savings of, I think, we estimate $110,000 for the five years. The shift in differential for communication tax is being removed and that has a savings of $22,000. And then the removal of the 3.5% on top of wages is $3,000, so $15,000 for the year. So the net cost, the net new cost approximately are anticipated to be $731,000. So when you take your wage increase minus your employer's savings, over the five-year period, it's $731,000 that the negotiated contract would, would realize. And the draft agreement is attached. It's been reviewed by legal counsel and there are no concerns from a legal perspective with respects to the agreement. And as indicated, this has been approved by the bargaining unit and it's here for Town Council to consider as the employer. And if you're in agreement, then a motion would be in order to approve the negotiated contract between APA and the town of Bridgewater.
Great, thank you. Any one of council have any questions?
Would you like a motion?
Yes, please, thank you.
I move the Town Council for the town of Bridgewater approve the negotiated Bridgewater Police Association Local 108 of the Atlantic Police Association Collective Agreement Contract, effective April 1, 2024 to March 31st, 2029, is presented in document 24-022A and authorize execution of same.
Great. Seconder, Counsel Conklin, thank you. Any discussion?
Do you have a question?
Okay. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carry, thank you. Donna, if you want to get Mayor Mitchell? Great. And so that brings us to our next item, Strategic Priorities Update. We have Mayor Mitchell back.
Thank you. All right. Over to you.
Okay, so included in your agenda are the, the results of a, a recent strategic priority workshop that council had with the strategic management team. This was held in January of, of this year and it is the last year of this council terms mandate. So initially in January 2021, council established strategic priorities that would guide the initiatives of council and staff. We had a four, four-year window to look at and then we broke that down into years. So this is the last year of that. The strategic priorities are included with the agenda that show what council has identified as the priorities for this upcoming fiscal year and some of them are already working on. And we've also included a work plan that gives you kind of the targets, the check-in points with council and when we anticipate that would be. The importance of the priorities are, ensures that staff resources are aligned with council expectations. So what we're working on is what you want us to work on and it meets your objectives and priorities. And those filter rate through the budget document that you'll see in the next month or two. And there'll be, those priorities will be proposed to be met through that budget document and they'll filter down into departmental work plans and then individual staff work plans. So it's important that we get it right, right now, and that those priorities are what you want, because resources will be aligned in accordance with that. So some of the things that are in your priorities, we have some service enhancements proposed. So the Business Park Expansion at Exit 12A, a marketing levy is a priority and we'll be looking at that in the next couple of months. Affordable housing incentives, by law enforcement options, museum rebranding and accessibility plan. And then those that would be classified as organizational enhancements, so more internal, would be HR recruitment and retention, data governance and privacy, asset management, a facility strategy. And those are all, as I indicated, reflected in the attached chart. There are some of these initiatives that will have a budgetary impact. Those are also provided in our request for direction. And those total, I believe, is a total of $705,000 for the priorities. So of those, you can see that we've got dollar amounts included with those. So we understand that as you look at these priorities tonight, you'll be saying it's difficult to approve $700,000 of new initiatives or initiatives without understanding what our entire budget looks like and what some of the, what some of the pressures may be within that. So by agreeing to the priorities tonight, there is a subject to budget approval kind of attached to that, that. of attached to that recommendation. So that as you look at your entire budget, you may wish to reconsider some of the priorities or at least have that opportunity. So we wouldn't ask that you lock that in tonight, but it just gives you an idea that these priorities do come with either position requirements or requirements to consult, or there's just a project cost associated with that. We also identified that there are other initiatives that council has that don't necessarily, as Jessica alluded to, hit the priority box, but they are things that are operational in nature, and council style wishes to see those done. And those do also have a monetary impact on the budget. One of them you consider tonight with the hemlock preservation, there's the pension transition, the 1/25th, the municipal election, the G H G emissions assessment, time and attendance software and budget software. So those all together total $617,000. So that on top of the priorities are things that you'll see appear in your budget. So the strategic plan, our priorities and the work plan are being presented here tonight. And as indicated, council is in agreement that these do align with your understanding of what you wish to see for priorities and what you wish to have staff work on, then you could approve those subject to budget approval. So you're accepting it, but anything that has a budgetary impact, you reserve the right to recall that one and perhaps take it out.
Questions from council. We went through this in quite a lot of detail. It was a good session. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Someone prepared to make a motion? Councilor Colwell?
I move the town council for the Town of Bridgewater approve the strategic priorities and accompanying work plan for the 2024-25 fiscal year as per document number series 24-024, subject to budget approval as applicable.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Tanner. Further discussion, hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. And just a reminder for the public that all the documents that we have in front of us are available on the town's website. Under Town Council, you can see agendas and minutes. And when you go to the agendas for 2024, this one is here, and 100% of the stuff we have is available there as well. Okay, we are down to requests for increase in Pro Kids budget for 2324. And Kara is still here with us for this one. Yay! Sorry, we built in that gap intentionally. We're like, oh, we're just going to make her wait.
That's fine, it's interesting. Okay, so this time we're going to be speaking to Pro Kids. So this year we have seen a significant increase in request for this budget year. So as a reminder for those who don't know, Pro Kids program provides financial assistance to children and youth from the Town of Bridgewater who, due to lack of funds, are not able to participate in sport recreational activities. Family can access funds to cover some or all the cost of registration fees for a sport recreational activity of the child's choice. And this program strives to remove financial barriers to ensure every child and youth has the opportunity to participate. So this year we have been able to approve 67 applications for funding. Of those 67, there were 48 individuals, and 15 applied more than once, and four applied more than twice. That means we've been able to support 33 individual families. Some of those families, we are supporting multiple children, and we've then also supported 21 different community groups. So currently, we have exhausted our funds for the year. The total budget for the 2324 Pro Kids program is $23,000. We received an additional $15,000 in funding from the United Way for a total of $6,000 from United Way. And we have exceeded our fundraising target by $400 to a total of $2,900. So consequently, we have approved in excess of the $15,000, and we are now reaching our upper limit of the $17,500. We have received a total request for the year of $23,000, and we have awarded $17,400. So the range of requests go from as low as $60 to up to $1,500 in some cases. And as you, we are all hearing, we have inflation to account for some of the increases. And also, we've come out of, you know, COVID feels like it was a while ago in some respects, but we're still coming out of that in terms of recreation and people coming back into activities. So we are now coming up to like the new normal of post-COVID, what it looks like to have this inflation and everything affect on our Pro Kids budget. So our average ask, where we see that range of $60 to $1,500, our average ask is $334, which is beyond the policy for an individual child. We, our policy currently has its individual max of $300 per year and a family max of $500. So the reality is choosing between potentially just not being able to, like, you know, if we're giving partial funding, then that family often will just not be able to access, like, to round out that, the rest of the money. And so the request here would be truthful, the one being, as I mentioned in the previous presentation about the grants organization's policy, we have that extra bit of money because of the transition where we have $21,000 that will be unspent in this year. So the first part of the request is that we use $4,000 of that to round out our Pro Kids fund. And that would allow us to continue to fund children up until April 1st when our budget was over. Otherwise, we won't be able to. We'd have to kind of close the program for the next few months. And our second request is direction to review the policy so that we can make sure that it is in line with our current organization's recreational fees. I think that covered everything. Is there any questions?
Questions from Councilor Colwell?
I'm a big proponent of Pro Kids, and so I'll be happy to support this increase in funding. However, my question is, what does the recreation department do to fundraise for Pro Kids?
We've, some fundraising comes from some of the sports organizations themselves. And we got a pretty big one from one of the football organizations. But then we also do, we try to bring like our donation bin to all of our events, so we're often providing free recreation activities. And so if people want to contribute, we have that. We also started doing 50/50s this year. So we had a 50/50 draw at the 50 Connections event as well as at Beautiful Bridgewater. So we are looking to do more and how we can kind of integrate that fundraising element into the different activities that we do throughout the year. So that's definitely on our radar. We'd like to try to increase that more. But again, it's, you know, people are having a hard time making ends meet. So it's on our radar to increase, to have an increased fundraising goal and bring it into more of our programming.
I wonder if we might consider doing, I know we bring a donation jar to events, but we have a lot of free events, which is awesome, but making a few, maybe a few events that are by donation, where you're more actively encouraging the donation?
Good idea.
Yeah, that's a good point. And having it be a little more front and center, that the intention of the event is to help us fundraise for Pro Kids.
Yeah, okay.
Councilor Tanner?
Kara, I should probably know the answer to this, but out of curiosity, do these organizations all have a Pro Kids rate, so to speak, that we are funding? Meaning, you might have a regular rate for people who can afford to pay for some of these activities, but you might also, the organization itself might have a Pro Kids rate, which is 75%, 50% off, so to speak?
I don't think there's a Pro Kids rate per se, but we do work with the organizations in terms of, say, maybe an applicant is also looking for equipment and having a hard time to fund equipment. And so we'll work with the organization where we'll say, okay, we can fund them, but can you guys help to, you know, reach out to your networks and find some equipment for folks and things like that? But yeah, it would be a bigger conversation. And as you know, there's programs that Modal and Chester offer as well. So it might be something that we would have to look at more broadly across the region and not just as the town, because we are funding the residents of Bridgewater who are potentially accessing programs that are outside of town. So they might be accessing a program that's in Modal, but because they reside in Bridgewater, we're funding them. If they reside in Modal, then Modal is funding them, even if they're doing, accessing a program in Bridgewater. So we each have our individual programs that we support our own residents. So if there was a Pro Kids rate, it would be something that we would probably want to work with our other municipal units together on maybe negotiating that or whatever that was looking for.
Yeah, just a thought, where they might offer up to Pro Kid rate registrations per annum for, anyway, just an idea. It's good.
Yeah. And a lot of the organizations too, as we know, are the same ones that are maybe applying for other organizations or that are run by volunteers. So there's a lot of different types of organizations out there. So some of them might be more for profit and be able to subsidize more, and other ones might be kind of this is just covering their costs.
Councilor Conklin?
Kara, I guess, how many applications in total did you receive? Did Pro Kids receive? So we had 67 approved. Any idea?
Yeah. That's a good question. Let me see if I can quickly find the answer to that. We try not to turn anyone away. And so we might partially fund the folks. But I don't have, I don't think I have documentation on if we've turned, like, if we have turned someone away, how many, or if we've offered partial funding, if they've been able to fund the rest. I don't have information on that, so I could find that and kind of report back.
Okay, we'll get that information.
Okay, thanks. Excuse me. So our average grant was $334, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm guessing we have to update our Pro Kids guidelines? Because we say that we got a maximum of, what, a cap of 300 per participant and 500 per family? So one thing that stuck out, you mentioned that you had a request for $1,500. So that was on the high side. Do we get many, like, requests, like, in the four-figure range? Like, thousand or more?
If I'm looking at it, you know, I don't want to give too many specifics, but like, in the four figures, it's just that one, and then a lot of them are close to a grand. So that one's a bit higher. And then we have a lot that are around a thousand, like, between, like, seven to $1,000, $400 to $1,000. The 300 mark falls at about halfway through the list if I was to, like, kind of organize things by the amount of money requested.
Okay, thanks. Do we have any idea of the, any data coming out of District Chester or Modal on their program, like, what kind of numbers they were receiving and granting?
I don't have that data, but I do know that they have a more robust program. They have more means to their program, so they're, but they are also seeing increases. If we are to review the policy, then we'll work with the other, with Chester and Modal specifically, and kind of review what their policies are looking like and what their amounts are, what their kind of protocol is around how they're checking and things like that. And so we'd like to do that work to make sure that A, we're aligned, and B, that we're doing right for our Town of Bridgewater folks.
Yeah, okay. No, and I just want to say that I like Councilor Colwell's suggestion about, like, a donation box or donation jar for the odd event, because a lot of times I've experienced where you raise quite a bit of money, even more so than if you were charging a nominal fee of, like, $2 per door, per entry at an event. Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, I think we'll try to think of that strategy a little more front and center this coming year. With that, like, large, large turnout for Beautiful Bridgewater, it could become kind of a fundraising event as well, where it's a little more front and center and advertised a bit earlier. We kind of were coming through the year, and we were like, oh, gosh, we're running out of money, so let's just start bringing it in. But now it's going to be more of a regular part of our day-to-day going forward.
Other questions?
Sorry, there's just a missing piece of the history also, that in 2020, just before COVID hit, literally, we brought in changes to the Pro Kids policy, where we implemented the cap with the eye to, you know, evaluating if that was going to work or not. So we brought in those limits that weren't previously in place with our policy. But then COVID hit, and we have not, as Kara was saying, it's just this past year where we've actually recovered to the level of sort of requests and things like that. So I just thought, just might not have remembered, because it is in that pre-amnesia setting in period, that we had actually changed the policy at that point.
Right. So I think under that, one of the motions on the floor, Direct Staff to Review Policy 98, to ensure it's meeting the needs of the community, that'll capture those, probably that issue of the cap and other gaps. Is someone prepared to make a motion? That, Councilor Colwell?
I move the town council for the Town of Bridgewater endorse the recommendation of the Community Development Department, too. Number one, approve the use of $4,000 of the unspent 2023-24 Grants to Organizations Program budget for additional funding of the Pro Kids program to support applications for the current fiscal year ending March 31st, 2024. And number two, direct staff to review Policy 98, Pro Kids, to ensure it's meeting the needs of the community.
Thank you. Seconded by Councilor Conklin. Had a good discussion. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion is carried. I'll just add, like, what I really appreciate about Pro Kids is, I think a lot of people might think it's just sports, and I know Kara talked about it's arts and culture and things. So when those items come across my desk, I see a lot of piano lessons and violin lessons and guitar lessons. And those things are really important, and I think it's probably one of the best things about Pro Kids is it's just activity-based. Is there an activity that someone wants to participate in, and it doesn't kind of discriminate of, oh, no, it's only sports, or only hockey, or only soccer? So I think that's, I think that's one of the biggest benefits of it. Okay, we are down now to go budget. Capital budget first review. I want to stress for anyone watching this that this is the first review. I can pretty much assure you, this will not be the final budget. There will be a lot of changes, but it's important that, we got to start at the top. So that's where we're at today. I just don't want anyone to look at it and go, what is happening? And on that wonderful high note, I'll turn it over to our Director of Finance.
It's no lobster roll event.
The presentation. Imagine doing the capital budget of the presentation.
You can always claw back our budget.
Here we go. See? All right. So just have a little bit of a presentation before we get into the details of the budget itself. Um, there we go. So if you have the presentation in front of you, we're just kind of giving you kind of here's a very summarized version of the 10-year capital budget. So you'll see that for 24, 25, we're proposing just over $12 million in capital projects. And we'll give you a little bit more of a breakdown on that later. Um, but that far right column is the projected debt service ratio based on, um, current information, um, without the operating budget being fully set and so on. So because we have a large, um, amount of budget, uh, capital budget carrying forward from 23, 24 in, in that carry forward row, it's keeping our debt service ratio down for one more year before we kind of see it start to increase because we haven't borrowed for those, um, larger multi-year projects yet. But you can see, we've got a trend where almost every year it's at least $10 million. There's some years that are below, um, or close to, but it's, um, largely wastewater projects in those years.
And just as that chart is up there and people start to look at those numbers get higher and higher and the debt service ratio, um, get higher and higher. Just again, a reminder that, that we budget based on funding that we know we are going to get. Either it's been committed by another order of government or it's, um, gas tax, for example, where we know we're going to get it. Um, so this doesn't include any funding that we're working on or that is non-committed.
There are, there are some assumptions in the grants column on some funding, but it hasn't been confirmed.
It may not be.
Yeah. And so what it, what it demonstrates to the mayor's point is that, um, we, we need substantial funding in order to keep our debt service ratio at a good level. So we'll be, we'll be seeking out further granting opportunities, but without the, those granting opportunities, we will have, the, the budget's not capital, 10-year capital budget's not sustainable and we will have to, um, significantly reduce the wastewater projects that we're able to, to complete. Um, but this is the 10-year capital plan as we saw, uh, last year with, um, escalations in price based on tenders that have been coming in. So that's why there's been a little bit of an, an increase. It's more realistic than previous years.
Just all the good news too. All right. So this is just kind of another view, um, of the 10-year capital plan. So the years are down the left-hand side and you can actually see the department. So the thing, um, that's most obvious here is the almost $66 million over that 10 years that's related to wastewater. Um, and we've got some, uh, police, some engineering projects that might be street paving and, and things that are not wastewater related. Um, so that is also pretty significant, but just to give you an idea of kind of the categories under which, um, we are investing in our capital. So museum, fire, police, parks and transit are there as well. Um, but just gives you a different way to kind of look at that 10-year commitment. And again, we saw earlier the debt service ratio kind of in the 10-year plan, but this just gives you a little bit of a view of, you know, where it's, where it's at right now and where it's projected to go without additional financial assistance. So a few highlights, again, we're going to go through them in detail, um, but, um, things that are in the 24, 25 capital budget that I know, um, we've discussed in the past are Empire Street, um, getting new water lines put in and paving, um, Empire from York to Hillcrest is about $200,000. The annual amount of pavement renewal at 600,000. Engineering and police, um, replacement vehicles, replacing them with electric vehicles. The business park infrastructure, so again, exit 12A, um, and the expansion in that area are significant items in the capital budget. Wastewater system upgrades, as you could see. Um, and there's also, um, an item being addressed from a previous meeting related to portable field lighting. Um, the carry forward budget is a pretty significant number at, um, $32 million. And I think this one might not have been updated for the last version, um, but it's a significant number, but I just wanted to break it down so it makes a little more sense to you. X project at exit 12A is almost $11.5 million of that carry forward. We know that construction is ongoing. We know that the end date for that project's still a ways out. So it has to be in the carry forward in order for us to continue to pay the bills related to that. Um, so that's making up part of that. Also business park expansion with road reserves and things like that at 5 million. And pump station 11, which, um, we're not anticipating to be fully complete as of March 31st. Also the whole project needs to carry forward because we can't borrow forward until it's complete. Um, so that makes up a significant amount. So when we remove just those three lines, we're down to $8 million a carry forward. So just to give you some perspective on how these big multi-year projects make that carry forward number big, um, we will be bringing the carry forward list to council, um, next month. And with that will give you an idea of how much is complete and committed so that, that also gives you some perspective on how much has already been spent of the 32 million as well. We just, um, working with engineering to make sure we have all the information for council on that. And there's a little glimpse of it in the last slide, which is here. So again, it doesn't have comments, so you can't see our thought process on it, but it gives you an idea of the 32 million, 14 million's been spent and fought, or as of today's, or probably last week, so as of close to the end of January, we've actually spent 14 million of it with another 5 million committed in the, in purchase orders and tenders and so on. So the bulk of the 32 is paid or committed, um, on most of those projects. There's some that are about to go to tender or RFP or quote that aren't quite finished. So some of them are at 0%, but they're things that staff are expecting to still be in the process of, um, up to March 31st. So again, just to give you a little different perspective, but we'll provide you with a detailed report on that carry forward list next month. So, um, everybody should have a copy of the capital budget in front of them hopefully. Um, I think we're just going to start with 24, 25 and not with the carry forward because that'll get addressed in a future meeting. I'm going to sit down because I expect to be a little while and I can see my papers better when I close in. So, um, we'll just go through the project lists. They're alphabetical, so they're not in there in any other, um, way other than alphabetical. So the first one is the BMA, exterior metal cladding and window replacement. Um, so as you know, there's been multiple years of projects to lead to the upgrades at the BMA. And so the budget for that for 24, 25 is $90,000. Any questions on that one? We'll just kind of go through them one at a time. So, all right. Um, the next one is the Brookside Cemetery with some road resurfacing there. Um, the budget for that is $10,000 this year. And as you can see, um, in the 10-year capital plan, it's a $110,000 commitment. So it's kind of an annual, um, upgrade, just similar to our road paving programs where we're working on the, the road resurfacing at the cemetery. Um, the next item is the Centennial Trail Bridge Condition Improvement. So we've had a condition review done a couple of years ago, um, which requires, um, an annual program of upgrades and inspections. And so that is budgeted for this year at 55,000. The next item on the list is the climate lens assessment. So, um, this one is a condition of funding that we have applied for. So we've included in the budget to have that item at $25,000. There's a crosswalk improvement program that again, is more of an annual program at $25,000. And I believe that there is a note in the description that it's tactile panels to be used under the Accessibility Act and the location is King and School Street. That was identified. The next one that was mentioned kind of in the presentation would be the water line and paving at Empire Street for $200,000. And that's, um, just a phase being York to Hillcrest.
There'd be a number of people happy to see that. Councilor Tanner? Is that, is that a real number?
200,000?
Yeah. You're confident?
We're Director of Engineering.
That seems like a long way to go.
That's just for paving.
That's just the paving. The water's in the PSC side.
Right, right, right.
We haven't seen the PSC budget yet.
Okay, just making sure. Okay.
That makes more sense though.
Makes a lot more sense. Thank you.
But if I don't say that, then people will be concerned we're paving without replacing the underground infrastructure and that one. So, um, the water is slated to be done with that.
Can I just ask, uh, our Director of Engineering, um, so that, how long is, does that take? So obviously people are going to, you know, they're going to be happy that Empire's getting some work done, but they're going to be inconvenienced for a month, two months? Sorry to put you on the spot. As we'll start talking about that part now.
Not always the most concise person, um, but, uh, so right now the, the next steps with the project is we do have to have the design completed. Uh, so we're hoping to have that done, um, between the end of this fiscal year and next, early next as a pre-budge approval, which we'll be asking for. Um, and then we'll go with tender. So I would expect that if we were lucky, this will probably finish up, um, in late fall.
Okay. But the road itself is going to be, like the road work, it's?
Yeah, so one, luckily with water, it's not, it's, it's not as deep as central sewer or storm, so, uh, we should be able to complete it as long as we have somebody who will build the work, uh, it should be done by late fall.
Okay. A couple of months of road construction?
Probably, yeah. Start to finish, it should only be, I would say, a maximum of 10 weeks at most if we can start in, say, August, September, but recognizing that we have to work around start school and things like that too.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, I would expect eight, 10 weeks for, for this project if I mean most.
Perfect, thank you. Uh, Councilor Conklin?
One more question before you go.
I tried.
Did I notice in the longer-term capital budget that the next phase is not the following year? Or did I miss something?
That's right. It skips a year.
It skips a year?
Yes, I'm sorry. I've played with the capital budget so much just reviewing things, I don't have this straight. But yeah, it should be a skip a year and then Empire, uh, the, the next phase from Hillcrest to High should be, should be in 27, 26.
26, 27.
Cause I know, I don't know about others around the table, but it's, it's a project that needs to be done that I hear about in the community and I'd like to see it moved up a year so that it's not skipped. But I don't know if that's feasible or how council feels.
I think the worst section is York to Hillcrest in terms of the pavement. Um, not that it's great from Hillcrest to High, but I think, I think really from, from almost to the arena, like and then up a block, it's, it's quite bad, but we can, we, council can make, can give direction to that, to bring that forward. Cause even this one, I think we're bringing it forward by not doing some of the other work.
It might be, if you bring it forward to this fiscal year, it probably would be difficult to complete at all.
But next year?
But to, to do it in, uh, quick succession is a matter of receiving that direction and, and hopefully reviewing the work in totality for that year, uh, that doesn't impact something that's already planned, uh, which I may not have ready at my fingertips right now. I'm sure we'll go over that. I won't get up so quick this time.
Yeah, Councilor Tom?
Is there any benefit, like looking long-term, to having little gaps? Cause I, I don't know if the, if the life of a street is kind of, kind of has an average. Would it mean that, um, one section's going to end up being repaired and we'd have a little break before and we repair another section? Or is that just not the way roads work?
No, I mean, certainly staggering is not never, it's, at least it's, uh, manageable if you can stagger it in smaller chunks. It's certainly hard to do a large, uh, project in all in one year. Cause I know the, the, the stuff that we're talking about right now is managing the public's expectations of finishing and the impact of their daily lives. Uh, but in terms of the road itself, certainly, you know, having it offset by year, yes, that asphalt, that section should fail before, uh, the next section. So if you're looking for future payment and renewables, then we probably follow that block by block or section by section of the elements.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Yes.
The next item is the fire department and that's bunker gear. So replacing 20 sets, they have an expiry date and they budget to replace, um, a certain number, um, close to that age and that's $90,000. The next item on the list is the Generations Active Park Conceptual Plan. So, um, as you know, this one's kind of gets, um, brought ahead or, um, discussed, but this is to get the design work done in 24, 25. Um, and if you look, um, at the future budgets, you'll see that there's actual, um, project work slated for, um, years two through five with actual construction. But there is $20,000 or $40,000 there, sorry, for the design. The next is the guard rail replacement program. Again, an annual program, um, with $10,000. So, um, staff identify the areas of need for that. The next item is I and I upgrades, sorry, inflow and infiltration upgrades. And again, part of an annual program as part of the stormwater master plan and that's budgeted at $65,000. Um, and some of that is funded through the wastewater betterment charge that was brought in a couple of years ago. And so those funds are collected, um, in the development process and held in the wastewater betterment reserve. So you can see some of the funding from this comes from reserve and that would be from the betterment reserve. The next item is the Pine Crest Playground and there's $15,000 budgeted there. In the 23, 24 capital budget, we had, um, three parks identified for projects to be done and they were contingent on receiving grant funding. No grant funding was received, so, um, we actually just took the towns portion of each of those and focused that money on the one park, which is the Pine Crest Playground. Um, and we're hoping to purchase the equipment in the current fiscal year we're in. Um, and then this additional amount is for anything else that needs to be done to complete that either installation or to complete the additional work at that park. And then future, um, budgets will identify the parks that are next. Um, but kind of, as we kind of mentioned earlier, in, in this discussion, we try not to put in budget for funding we, that aren't confirmed. And so that's the impact of putting in, um, funding that we haven't confirmed is then staff have to pivot instead of three parks, we only got to one. The next item is parking meter replacement. And so that is in the description, two units that are consistently not working and require frequent repairs. And so replacing them with two, um, units with newer technology is noted there with a budget of $20,000. The next item is, as mentioned, the paving, uh, renewal program of 600,000. And then you can add to that the Empire Street of 200,000. So there's a total, um, specific paving projects of $800,000 in the budget.
Councilor Tanner? Kim, can you remind me again what our annual parking meter revenue is, line item is?
Nope.
No? Ballpark?
I can.
I thought it was 20. 22. Mike says 22.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, so we have, um, some parking meter revenue that goes to police and we have parking permits which stay with the town. So it's kind of a little bit all over the place. Um, if you recall when we were looking at the operating budget last year.
And these parking meters would be for the revenue that goes to the police?
So they're the key.
Police.
Yeah, so they would show up in police. Yeah. But we constantly are not collecting revenue because the meters aren't working or, you know.
They don't seem, they're not that old, but.
No, these are the newer ones, aren't they?
No, they're 14.
So what is that? 26, 2017, 2017? Uh, so I'm assuming we're not going to go to the same vendor.
No, I think staff will probably end up bringing back some options for consideration with respects to the new technology that we would employ.
This is a very frustrating topic. I know council's frustrated by this topic. Um, so I'm sure this will be, this will come back to, to be discussed, I'm sure.
Um, the next item on the list is Pearl Street paving. Um, the 23, 24 budget had $225,000 in it to pave the unpaved portion of Pearl Street, which was completed this year that we're in. Um, but we actually didn't use the whole budget, so there was $93,000 remaining from that. So our Director of Engineering has suggested there are still some improvements that can be done on the. some improvements that can be done on the existing paved portion of Pearl Street, and wanted to use, we didn't put in the carryforward because it, that part of the project's done, but it's being proposed that there be some additional work done on Pearl Street with that leftover money, so we were intending to spend on Pearl Street. The next item is Pine Crest Subdivision Storm Sewer, so this is, again, another annual program where we do some storm separation in that area, and the amount budgeted is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and most of that work is completed by staff. The next item is police firearms replacement, and the budget for that is fifty thousand dollars, I believe that was discussed last year during the budgeting process, that that would be upcoming. The next three items are related to police vehicles, so they currently have a leased vehicle that they would like to buy out at the end of that lease, and so that buyout is eighteen thousand dollars. They are looking for a replacement of their current K-9 SUV at eighty thousand, and also one marked electric vehicle or truck at a hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Councilor.
I have a question, probably more for the public than myself, but why a truck and not a car?
I can answer that question, sure, this question comes up quite a bit. So, there are a lot of times where, so keep in mind, police never had a pickup truck until we had the Ford Lightning, and often, whether it's collecting something that's been stolen, like an ATV, multiple bicycles, large items like that, without a truck, they had no ability to collect that, or they've had to get public works, which is less than ideal when you're talking about stolen items in a crime scene, and so the first thing is that the truck gives them more utility and flexibility for those kind of things. The other is that it's larger inside, and so it actually is a better for their clients and the client's safety in the back of the vehicle, so when they're transporting someone that they've arrested, it is better than in the car. The other thing that I think they now, there's no police cars anymore that are all-wheel-drive, and like, there was Dodge Chargers, I don't believe they make those anymore, Ford does not make police cars anymore, so they're left with SUVs or pickup trucks. The SUVs are smaller, and again, it goes back to like the Durangos we have, if someone has found a stolen bicycle and police need to go get it, it can't fit, it actually doesn't fit in the back of the SUVs, because you've got metal and you've got the separation, it's called the silent partner in the back, where they put the people in the back, so pickup truck is actually the better police vehicle. But I asked, I asked the same question, I get that from the public. Probably a good opportunity to say that the electric police truck is doing exactly as it advertised, so it is saving the money it was anticipated to save, so I know that the Tesla, three months of use of the Tesla is the equivalent of one day of the Durango, those, the costs are exactly the same, and one month use of the Ford Lightning is the same as one day's cost of the Durangos, so the, I know that the costs are a little higher, but that's the other reason why that pickup truck is, because there's an electric option right now, and so the cost savings are realized quite quickly. I know that was an important question for the public. Uh, Councilor McDonald, I think you were next, and then Councilor.
I was gonna ask if there are gas cars available, or if it's just electric cars that are no longer available?
No, there's no gas police cars anymore.
Okay.
Councilor.
You may like the trucks, but damn it, it's hard to pick them up on the road, and you see, you can't tell it's a police vehicle until you're lit up on top of them.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Well, it may be good, but I'm saying, it's hard to pick up the police vehicles now, like, they used to stand out, they get different colors.
Even the lights.
And the lettering blends in with the black on the truck, it's just hard when your meter vehicle try and pull over, because they're not as visible as they used to be.
Do you find they're lit better than they used to be, though?
Oh, yeah.
They're all over the place with lights all on the side.
I saw two on the corner of Victorian and King today, it was very well lit up.
Were they in your rearview mirror?
No.
Nice, appreciate it. That may be more to do with them being black than, I mean, we used to have white police cars and...
Right, I think it just lit up, you're gonna notice it, but when they're not lit up, you don't notice it.
But I appreciate the question on the, on the pickup truck, I know, like I said, that I've had that one a lot, and then, of course, the EV options, so so far, it's working well. They'll always, they will always have SUVs, I believe, even for the K-9 unit, that has to be an SUV, and I think they'll always have, will always have to have some gas-powered vehicle.
They're looking at a hybrid for that.
Yeah, some hybrids.
All right, so the next item on the list is a portable lighting system that would be used for lighting up potentially sports fields or other events, and the budget for that is twenty thousand dollars.
Councilor.
Another question.
Yep.
This would be not exclusively, but largely for the Seahawks Football Club, have they been consulted?
Yes.
And are they, is this...
They're working through that right now, and Matt's having some conversations with some representatives from their football group right now to make sure that they're going to be adequate for the, for the needs.
Okay.
Uh, Councilor.
So, this, okay, so this would be for use, even though it's portable, primarily for Kinsman Field?
It could be used for other places, such as the farmer's market, night events, or other potential festivals that we may have in the evening, so they're portable, so they're meant to be able to be moved around.
Yeah, so that the, the idea, and Matt, you can correct me if I'm wrong, the idea is that they would be at the town, in one of our town facilities, and as groups needed them, they would kind of sign them out, and so we have to figure out the policy for that, we have to figure out how to make sure that they're charged up all the time, because they are battery-powered, they are, the company does use them primarily for sports, so, you know, fingers crossed, when you look at all the sheets, it looks like they'll be adequate, but it's not limited to just the Seahawks, so it could be soccer, it could be, you know, other events, arts and culture. So, so how do they get from place to place? Do we have to tow them? They're in bags, they're, 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 they look like they're in bags, like the size of...
Bigger than Matt.
Pretty small? Yeah. Oh. Yeah. You're gonna carry them then?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're carryable.
Okay.
They're one minute, one minute to set up, as the mayor's said, is that they're, I'm in conversations now with the one user group, but the, the idea behind this one would be that they would be available to anyone whenever in the... Again, procedures without policies we need to put in place, winter payments or whatever we need to do, I wasn't expecting charges for this, but just, like, somebody gave, just, okay, you wanna rent them for the week, you know, you're liable for them, return them, but we'll have them charged and ready to go for you, because I would assume most people would wanna try to get a couple of practices or a event, a day or two out of it, other lights, so, but yeah, we're, we're still early days, but I think most of the things are solvable.
Remembering that we're going from nothing to, to these, I think, and one of the things I did like about them is, you get a number of them now, and if it needs a few more, you just, you can add to kind of your inventory of them until you get exactly what you want. More questions on that one? Here?
Yeah, just a question about where the lights are rechargeable, do they give a life expectancy of how many charges, or?
That I haven't looked into, because I know that I, I did a little bit of research at multiple websites, they do say that depending on their, depending on how cold it is, or what the maximum, if you want to have it on low, medium, or high intensity for light, they can go anywhere from two hours to ten, I would expect that in the cold weather, that might affect that as well, but I don't, I believe in my conversation, they would've said two or three years, but these would have been, but that's, I guess, something I shouldn't be quoted on right now.
Okay, and if there's a warranty?
I would expect that there would be something similar to a three, six, or twelve-month warranty that one could get for, for these batteries.
Okay.
Councilor.
This is very new policy, we don't have, we haven't purchased any other equipment to lend any other groups, this is brand-new.
Other than, well, you know, we always lend out chairs or things that, oh, but very small stuff, nothing to visit.
We have bikes at the LCLC and things like that, so could probably find a way to make it sound similar.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, we would, we'd have to consult with our insurer and do a few things like that, but...
All right.
Next up, Public Works Job Site Waste Disposal Site, so the budget for that is one hundred thousand dollars, and that's to relocate and create a new space for a lot that they've recently lost, so they need to create a new spot.
Councilor.
So, this one, I was just wondering if this is, it seems like something that should require a presentation or discussion to council, just on this item?
So, this is when we put in the Connector Road, and, you know, exit 12A, the old dump site, Public Works used to use that to dispel, to stockpile materials and dispose, well, I shouldn't say dispose of, but store materials there, and obviously, they can't do that because the Connector Road, so they're running out of space at their site on St. Phillips Street, and they need to find a place to store material, so this would just provide an allowance for the acquisition of, of an area of land, and of course, council would have to approve where that would be located, that type of thing, but this is more just, let's get it in the budget, and then we'll work through the logistics of where it is and what size, all that stuff.
Next up is Shipyard's Landing Walkway Replacement for seventy-five thousand dollars, so as you've probably seen, except for what's covered with snow currently, part of that was completed in the current budget year, and so there's additional work to be done there, so that's been added to the budget. And then we have our regular sidewalk improvement program for ninety thousand dollars, and again, an annual area that's determined by the engineering department for upgrades to sidewalks.
Councilor.
Okay, so sidewalks, so we've got nine, this is, these are probably just annual numbers, but it's ninety thousand for sidewalks, six hundred thousand for roads, so I'm wondering, like, if we were to do a section of road, whatever, a thousand meters, so is it, do the percentages work out, like, would it cost?
So, that, I know our Director of Engineering has his own opinion on those two budget lines, and he would rather just have an allotment, so he could decide what's best, but that's not ninety thousand dollars related to Empire Street paving, so that's, it could be separate projects altogether, and staff determine, you know, where the greatest need is, so I think last year we saw some areas on King Street and whatnot done, but otherwise, the Director of Engineering might have to answer any detailed questions on that.
I guess...
And how far ninety thousand dollars gets us, if that's what you're asking?
Yeah, my question is not so much where, but...
Linear measurements, is it?
Yeah, if we were to do a hundred, a hundred meters, that would be like ninety thousand is, what, one-seventh of sixty thousand, would it cost that little to do a sidewalk, or is it, because I'm wondering if they should be equal, I, I think a lot of the sidewalks are in bad shape.
Well, I'll start off with, it depends, so certainly, I think there's been previous conversations with council on the, the amount that is required to invest in our roads and sidewalks, that, and our annual allotment. For roads, I believe, was stated before, if we invest six hundred thousand, our annual investment based on what we foresee in an annual asset management program is more like one point eight million, if you want to stay ahead, I would assume that our sidewalks are close to a three times, like, we're only, we're only investing a fraction of what we need to have our sidewalks in better condition than what they are now, we also have sidewalks that, you know, the mixture of asphalt and concrete, the price for those differs, because certainly there's more work involved with concrete, but it lasts longer, asphalt certainly quicker, doesn't have a life expectancy, so we are trying to transition away from the asphalt as much as possible, depending on the time of year, of course, if, if, but I, I guess with, what I can say in previous employment, if I was having a contractor do, do sidewalk, we were just bare minimum, probably around fifteen hundred dollars a year, drove to put in, bring a new sidewalk, and I would say that those costs have only gone, increased since my employment here in Town Bridge Water, even doing it in-house or with contractors, I think the, the last time I did a comparison as a section of sidewalk, which is only a replacement, so we didn't really have to build this upgrade up forward, and it was like for like, and Public Works, doing it in-house versus contract, was about the same, it might be a few thousand dollars off for the total, but I believe it was, I actually, I can't remember the length of sidewalk, I'd have to go back to my notes, but I do have that comparison for Empire, and it wasn't that far off, but I, I know the numbers are both thirty-four thousand dollars to do that section of Empire, I just don't know what linear measurement, I like, I remember dollar figures more than linear numbers, so, but that gives you an idea, so if you drive up Empire, you see the brand new section, that was about thirty-four thousand dollars to do that section in-house, which is probably a hundred, a hundred meters or so?
That's concrete.
Sorry?
Concrete?
Yes, concrete.
Councilor Tanner. Just under the, under the new service exchange agreement, roads got pulled out, but...
Not sidewalks.
Not sidewalk?
No. So, you mean in terms of it's a provincial?
Yeah, when do we, when are we able to file for that, to see if we get in the priority roads generally?
Did they park the whole road thing?
I thought they did, but then I thought they brought it back again, no?
No, I think roads is all parked.
I think they parked the whole thing, yeah.
Indefinitely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, until they work it out, but yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it did have, it did exclude, like, sidewalks from that.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah, just clarifying, for Empire, where we have the paving and water, that, that two hundred thousand includes sidewalk, does it, on Empire?
No, it does not.
So, would that come out of our ninety thousand dollar budget?
Uh, if during, staff have tried to complete a preliminary assessment of roads and sidewalks ahead of this budget, of course, it's, it's not something that we can be held to, because we'd like to do our, our normal spring inspections or assessments for both, right now, Empire wouldn't be on that list that I'm aware of, I know that, I don't have my notes in front of me, the, if we, if I suggested what are the three areas, but of, of course, with the population, there's a number of factors that go into it, I mean, so we rate the sidewalk itself, the curb and the gutter, but also, another tangible item is, is that where that sidewalk is located, so certainly, more people are walking on King Street, they're walking on York Street, okay, so, and in, also in line with other programs, so my notes back on December sixth, myself, noted that we are doing some work, some fence work around the Brookside Cemetery, and we know that there's a little bit of a beautification that we need to do there, so I know that we'd like to address that, there is a bad section there on the corner, and it's heavily walked, the, now I lost my, North Street, North Street, if we align with some bus stop improvements, and we have a number of complaints that happen along North Street as well, and, I keep forgetting, Le Havre, again, trying to, there might be a section there that, again, very preliminary, that we, staff have noted, but since my time here, thank you, you know, it's, I noted the number of students that walk from Parkview and the, and the condition of that, to get students at least to eventually to the trail, the trailhead there, Centennial Bridge, to get them on that, so there's, as you can see, the ninety thousand just isn't enough, and staff do struggle with the number of competing demands, whether it be, you know, in, in one area of town versus others.
So, I guess the question is, if, if council found that there was a need or the wish to increase the sidewalk budget, would staff be able to complete the tasks?
That we, I believe, in my second year, year here, I think we increased the sidewalk budget to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, staff did struggle to complete that in-house, and we actually had to look to a contracted service for that, very good work, it's just that we're now at their, at their, you know, at their whim, of whether they can complete it or not, and in a, in a manner that's sufficient to staff. in a, in a manner that's sufficient to staff, but we have tried, and I believe we came close to spending that 150, but it's, it's a struggle.
Just, if I may, going back to Empire, so if you're putting in the water line, do you, would you disrupt the sidewalk, or at all?
Since the design is not completed, I can't say for sure, but I, I would hope to keep costs down for that specific project, because water, PSC is paying, or proposed to pay for the bulk of it, that it wouldn't impact the sidewalk.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I was just going to mention that, in terms of the actual sidewalk and road pavement management pieces, when that list gets developed in the spring after they do their assessments, after the winter months, we will let council know where they are and what they are, so that, you may get questions about work being done in particular areas of town, you'll at least know what it is, and then, as Matt said, it's subject to change depending on things, situations that could arise that change that priority, but it'll give you an idea.
Certainly don't want to get any of these hopes up.
Yes.
But, you know, staff do try to do an assessment, we like to do it as much as we can, but as much as I hate to say, things do change quickly.
I wouldn't go far.
So the next item also relates to sidewalks, and that's on the Veterans Bridge, and the budget for that is $50,000.
That, it's deplorable condition, so that is, it's been a very, very concerning for myself and staff, so staff have tried to reach out to our provincial counterparts to see if there's an opportunity there, we are responsible as a town for the maintenance and repair of that, of sidewalk, so my hope was to piggyback on maybe something they're already doing, unfortunately, I'm not aware of any work on the Veterans Bridge this year, whether it be expansion joints or what have you, so in order to ensure this project does, I can't wait another year, I need to have something done, because the risks to the public are great in some of those areas, and I mean, you can drive it and you can see, so we're hoping that we're able to do something there, the bulk of that money really is for traffic control, as you can appreciate, to have Bridgewater going down to one bridge can be difficult at times, so we're hoping that we can at least make some review repairs on both the north and south side of that bridge. We get a number of complaints every year.
Yeah.
So these are for Veterans Bridge?
Yeah.
What about the old bridge?
The old bridge, we do receive a number of complaints every year for that one, certainly with the request to either upgrade or change, certainly, that is a Department of Transportation bridge, so we have to consult with them on anything we do, but staff have procured the wood to replace this year, it is problematic to try to do it, but we, it is in our work plan to do that through operations.
I think we all dream of a time where that walkway is on the outside of the bridge, not on the inside of the bridge, and I know that a former MLA was, had raised that actually in a public, at the opening of Biginewiska Park, he talked about the walkway being moved to the outside of the bridge, now, obviously, it wasn't like an official announcement, but I would, I would hope that perhaps we can, maybe that's a political job, to talk to our MLA about what can we do to expedite that, because I know there are a number of people in town that simply will not cross that bridge, because, you know, the mirrors on a pickup truck start to encroach on the sidewalk of the bridge, just because vehicles, imagine when that, size of a vehicle when that bridge was built, right? Now we, you know, now we're all driving big trucks and big trailer mirrors, so.
We received complaints on both, on both bridges, so staff certainly would like to progress both issues, one we can do a little easier than another, it's an agreement, the, the old bridge is, is certainly, yeah, it's, it needs work.
Just, if I may, while we're on bridges, so North King, where we've got the sidewalk out on the bridge, help me up, Sperry Bridge? I know it's the province to repair the sidewalk, or the pedestrian?
No, the pedestrian bridge is ours, but there's no sense repairing the pedestrian bridge, because the main bridge is going to be replaced, and we'll have a sidewalk on it in two years.
Which we'll have to...
If we're lucky, two years.
Yeah.
Yes, we're, we're going to have to have a conversation with our provincial neighbor. Now, in, in their defense, you know, had the flood not happened, we wouldn't be having this conversation really, because our, our pedestrian walkway wouldn't have been compromised.
Compromised, yeah.
But it has been, and like other areas of the province, you know, things have had to be expedited due to the floods, so, I mean, I know you and I have talked to our provincial counterparts about speeding that up, I don't think designing a bridge is easy, so I think it does take time, and, and I think you were told, like, there's a lot of bridges in the province that are still being done from the floods, and this one works, so I guess it's probably a little bit lower priority, but the, the pedestrian walkway is ours, and it, from a cost perspective, my understanding from staff, correct me if I'm wrong, is it doesn't make sense to fix it, because it's going to be redundant when the province builds the new bridge.
Correct.
And it would be a costly fix.
Yeah.
Not ideal.
Nope.
At all, but people are making it work.
Okay, next item is corrugated culvert replacement program, so $10,000, and that's part of an annual program, I believe, that might happen every other year. The next one after that is traffic light upgrades, and the location for that is Le Havre Street and Old Bridge.
So I got to ask about this one, just, just because of all the traffic light loops that need to be replaced, that would have been probably the last one, I would think, just because traffic seems to go through there very, in a very orderly fashion, and rarely is there not someone turning left, so the left turn signal just coming on automatically seems to work, versus, like Aberdeen and Le Havre, and King and Victoria are, like, I think, I think Aberdeen and Le Havre is just a much, much, much busier intersection, and not always, like, the lights, the turn signals go, right, turn arrows, but there's not always someone turning, so is that really the priority?
I guess the, the idea would be, based on some of the discussions with council that have had thus far, is that we still want to progress the traffic operations study, what was difficult for staff, given staff resources, is do any major ones, as the ones you've said, whether it be King and Victoria, and the replacement of all those lights, as well as doing the accessibility, replacing the islands, at, and a large capital cost, this isn't something that we could do in-house, or it would be contracted, so, and with Le Havre and Aberdeen, we have not only the intersection, but the Q lane that has been quoted that we would like to do as well, which are all very valid, and I agree, they should be done, but in order to progress it, and I'm trying to play, trying to create a reasonable expectations of workload for next year, I know we do receive a number of complaints at that intersection, and it wouldn't take much in terms of getting it working like our other renewed intersections like York and, and Victoria, so that's where staff said, well, if we can do something, and the complaints are received, that would be the location that we would attempt to do, to do it, so it's kind of, we would like to go to the other locations, but I don't, we won't be able to, that's, that's something I cannot deliver on that.
And if, and if we're doing work on, on Veterans Bridge and having traffic control, it doesn't, that doesn't help the, make the case for dealing with the lights there, it's just still too big a project?
It's, yeah, it's much too, too big of a project, and certainly, the other, some of the other locations, whether they're the underground infrastructure, and I have to get a little bit more familiar with those constraints that we have, but I know King and Victoria would be one of those as well, we wouldn't want to put a new, brand-new intersection in, and not only rip it up for underground infrastructure, I'm not as familiar with the infrastructure at Aberdeen and, and Le Havre at this point, but I know that, that those have been discussed from Public Station 14 to the mall, needs to be, need some improvement, so we're trying to do something.
Oh, that's perfect, that's a great, great answer, helps me, thank you.
All right, next up are vehicles, so we have a half-ton truck with a budget of $120,000, we have a five-ton truck at $275,000, and replacement of the Ford Escape SUV with a hybrid for $65,000.
That Ford Escape Hybrid that we have, by the way, was the very first hybrid for a municipality in the province of Nova Scotia, and it's still, still kicking, oh, I'm just saying, I thought that was pretty cool when we bought it, and people were upset when we bought it, and it's still working.
I did want to mention that the five-ton truck, we had one in the 23, 24 council budget, which council approved, but they also pre-approved the purchase for 24, 25, to order two at the same time, because of the really long delivery dates on that one, so council has actually pre-approved that one.
That's called.
My question was on the dump truck, so two, oh, no, never mind, answer my own question. I got the date wrong, so I'm good.
Nope, all good.
Okay.
Yep.
Next are wastewater-related projects, and so the first one being digester building ventilation study with a budget of $50,000. Good. The one after that is pump station number three assessment and design, and so that is the pump station near the mall, and that budget is 3.77 million dollars.
Yeah.
Pump station number six, the budget is $260,000, and that is the design portion of that project, you'll see the total budget for that project being 2.6 million, so the construction is in future-year budgets, so that is the, the design work for that one. The next one is storm separation on St. Phillips Street, so kind of in conjunction with the work happening at Exit 12A and the development of that area, and that budget is 4.5 million dollars for storm separation only. And the next item is related to that project, and that would be the budget for a project engineer, and that's $60,000. The next one on the list is the wastewater treatment plant storm separation with a budget of $400,000. And the last item, which is not wastewater, relates to a water tower project with a current year budget of 415,000, but a future cost to include that 415 being 2.3 million.
I'm a little confused why it's 2.3.
That one, Matt has a recent change to that cost.
So that, that would be updated to, I believe, in December, we had a presentation for the master plan, Phase 3, and in there, it was, it was suggested that we needed to increase the size of the water tower, and they gave us an estimated budget, so I added that to that figure.
So that increase is for our, our needs?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and that was, I think, an $800,000 estimate that Design Point had identified.
I went from 1,080, 1,083,000 plus 300,000, then plus the 415.
Plus, plus. Okay.
Still no construction start date in the land?
There is a little bit of movement there, and there will be some pieces coming to PSC shortly on that, not, not necessarily construction, but location.
Different location?
No, just, the land piece, yeah.
So that's the end of the 2024, 25?
Yes, so that's the end of 2024, 25, and so you'll see that the total's just over 12 million dollars, and I highlighted kind of the big pump station three, and the St. Phillips Street work being, you know, seven, eight million dollars of that 12, so other than that, there's a lot of annual replacements, vehicles, equipment, and so on. Just wanted to note how that, how that 12 million dollars is expected to be funded, so we have capital from operating, so that just comes out of our operating budget to fund capital projects of just under 1.3 million, gas tax of 660,000, so we get an annual allotment, and then we assess the budget to determine what projects might qualify for gas tax funding and so on, for example, if we're doing the work with staff, we can't use staff labor and claim that on the gas tax funding, so we have to be very particular of what type of project and then have, what the costs entail to ensure they qualify. We have grants identified as 3.2 million, they may or may not be confirmed amounts, it does require us to borrow 5.7 million dollars, and then the remainder coming from reserve funds, operating reserve and capital reserve.
Okay, any other questions on this? Obviously, this is the first, our first kind of go-through, there will be more, Council Thorburn?
How accurate are those estimates that we have in those numbers? Because we've seen everything that's on there double or triple, and the, and these numbers are not for next year, they're probably for this, two years at least, so I just want, I, I just struggle to see how accurate they are, knowing our history.
I think for St. Phillips Street in particular, because we previously tendered that work, we had recent actual tender values for that, the scope of work might have been adjusted slightly to kind of help get that down to where it, where it fits in the budget, but the budget, you know, we don't, we can't anticipate what kind of increase we could have again, but we definitely based it off of the information we had for that project specifically. Pump station three, I know a little less about that one in particular, and it would still probably be based on engineering estimates.
And I, I know that Audrey had gone through, but I think, maybe a year ago, not quite a year ago, and looked at some of the numbers and adjusted them, but it, it is, yeah, truly, like, we had some recent estimates that were way out of whack when, when we had them revalued, so there is a little bit of risk in that, we do build contingencies into budget numbers to help soften the impact of that a bit, but the last few years, it's just been a little bit of a guessing game, unfortunately.
I think we found out at a little in Duff from...
Found out in a couple of locations.
In a couple of locations.
Yeah.
As, as you review this in more detail, if you have questions, I would ask that you send them through the CIO to, and then she'll get them to the, to the right managers, but if you could CC council, so that we're not sending seven of the same question, and then that way, when we get the answers, we'll bring the answers back for, for council, it'll just be a little easier than, like I said, seven questions all going to, to Matt about the same thing, and then the CIO can make sure that those questions are asked and that they're answered as we go through our budget deliberations. Okay? Everyone's...
Yep.
All right, thanks, Kim, as always, lots of, lots of time spent on this, and to staff. I know budget season isn't fun, but hey, we all get to go through it together. Our last item is appointment of a returning officer, so for every municipality in the province of Nova Scotia, it is an election year in the fall, and so we're all going to have returning officers, so in this case, we are looking to appoint the Chief Administrative Officer and appoint Julie Visers as returning officer for the 2024 municipal election, someone prepared to make that motion? Council Tanner?
I'm with the town council for the Town of Bridgewater, endorse the recommendation of the Chief Administrative Officer and appoint Julie Visers as returning officer for the 2024 municipal and CSAB school board election scheduled for October 19th, 2024.
Perfect, thank you, that's seconded by Council Thorburn, and you're the backup?
Well, once you're appointed.
All right, good.
Not yet.
Okay, we have a mover and a second, are all those in favor? Those opposed motions carried, thank you, we'll let Julie know the great news. We do have a quick in-camera meeting after, I have a motion to adjourn, Deputy Mayor Fergier, seconded by everybody, Council McDonald, we are adjourned, thank you.